Okay, call to order. Board of Education, study session April 15th, 6 o'clock. John, take attendance?
All board is present.
Okay. Welcome, everyone, before we start public comments to our hybrid meeting. Myself, John, and Jennifer are here at Doyle, and the rest of our colleagues are taking the meeting virtually, just for everyone to understand what's going on. And Dave, is there a public comment?
I'm not seeing anyone in public comments right now. I'm not getting a lot of comments.
Okay, with that, I will hand it over to Superintendent Watson.
Thank you, President. Colin, if we could pull up the COVID report, please? Just one second, so I can see this a little bit better. All right, thank you. So looking at the COVID vaccine distribution, a little over 632,000 total vaccines. One thing of note, the Johnson &amp; Johnson use of the vaccine has been paused by the CDC, so there should be an update in the next seven to 10 days. So the amount of vaccine available, not just in Oakland County, but throughout the U.S., could be impacted by this. Next slide, please. Looking at the weekly COVID-19 report, almost every single category and every indicator is up, except for the seven-day percent positive, which even though it's down a little bit, is still really high. The number of cases reported is up 1,289 over the last time I gave a report. Also of note, the healthcare capacity in many places is now at or over capacity. And looking at two of the larger infected or infection rates are the 19 to 29 and the 30 to 39, but overall, all the numbers are increased for every single age group since the last time I reported. Next slide, please. So breaking it down by Oakland County, remember, even on the Oakland County site, there is a three-to-four day lag before everything's updated, so we're still seeing really high daily rates that are reported in Oakland County. So you can see the first wave that came through Oakland County, the second wave, and now that the third wave we're in, which is the highest of the three so far. Next slide, please. Looking at the hospitalization trend across the state of Michigan, you can see that patients not in critical care has increased, the patients on ventilators has increased, as has the number of critical patients in hospitals throughout the state of Michigan. Next slide, please. This kind of reiterates what I've said before, so looking at where we're at in the rec category, we still have a large number of new cases that are being reported, not just in Oakland County, but statewide, and a high number of percent positive. Next slide, please. Looking at the United States as a whole, we know we peaked at roughly 250,000 cases per day. Right now, the United States is about 68,000 to 70,000 cases per day, with Michigan being the obvious hotspot in the United States. Next slide, please. President Colin, I'll turn it over to you.
Okay, I don't see, trying to look, I don't see anyone's hand up or anything in the chat, so you can go. Lisa's hands up? Okay, Lisa?
And asking two questions, excuse me, about just the COVID part of the presentation right now?
Yeah, this is, if you have, well, just to rotate, I mean, if you have more questions than two, so just to rotate, so if you have two questions. Yep, we can go through the list, Lisa, yep.
Okay, so here's my first one. Given, and just so everyone's clear, you know, I didn't, I don't like to surprise people with questions, so I did submit these earlier. I'm reading from questions that Superintendent Watson has gotten from earlier. I don't like surprises, so anyway. First question, given that we are not required to maintain 20 hours of in-person learning in order to be eligible for House Bill 4048 funding, is there anything short of a government, like MDHHS or OCHD mandate, that would influence our decision to postpone in-person education?
Yes, I mean, there are unknown factors that could come into play that we don't know what they are right now. Also, remember, we're making decisions by class by class and building by building and activity by activity decision, and so there could be a situation, like I said, that is unknown that requires us to close, or something we learned. What we know about COVID continually changes, right? So we looked at what the data suggested three months ago, or even a month ago, about the B.1.1.7, as far as it being more, you know, more contagious, and not only more contagious, potentially more deadly, but if you look at the most recent report from the Lancet, the data suggests, yes, it's 50 to 70% more contagious, but it's not more deadly than the original variant. So what those things may be, I don't know for sure. Also, when we look at capacity, you know, when you get a little over 50% of a class that's going to be out, that could be potential for closing a class as well. This is where we're working with Oakland County Health Division to make those decisions. Previously during the school year, they've recommended that you should close, you know, or told us, you need to close that classroom because of A, B, and C. I think what's really hard for everyone, including myself, is we all want to know the answer. When does A, you know, what does one plus one equal two, right? What is the answer for everything? And I think that's part of the frustration, is the unknown, and so that's kind of where we're at today, and that could change five hours from now, it could change five days from now, but that's currently where we're at.
So does the recommendation of the governor, the CDC, the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, do any of those things, how much of a factor are those in our decision? I know we can't be exact, but how weighted are we viewing these developments? I know that they're factors, but how much of a factor, you know, and how much in our decision, what kind of role do they play in our decision-making?
It definitely plays a role as part of the conversation, but let's understand one thing. The Michigan Department of Health and Human Services has the ability and authority to close schools at any time, period. They can do that. We also know the best practice has become not just having a blanket open and close, and you just, you look at targeted closures. So reaching out to Oakland County for their guidance, and I quote, "Schools are the safest place for kids to be right now. We know where they are, we can monitor that they are wearing masks, and that we have policies in place to reduce transmission. We don't know what they're doing when they leave school," end quote. In the data as far as school outbreaks, the data suggests the same thing. So if you look at the number of students that are each week, or at least the last two weeks, in Oakland County that are included in the school outbreaks, and then divided out by the number of total cases in Oakland County, 99% of the cases are outside of a school setting. And that data is found on the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services dashboard. Every Monday by 3:00 p.m., they update school outbreaks. And for it to be a school outbreak, it's transmission of COVID from one person to another in a school setting, so outbreak is an uncertain number. It could be student A passing it to student B, that's an outbreak. I think sometimes people think by using the word outbreak, it means there's 50 or 100 kids, it can be as small as two, that's considered an outbreak.
I do have another question, with, you know, kind of down along a different line, but I want to make sure nobody else does before I...
All right, so I'll go around. Howard, do you have a question?
No questions at this time.
Michelle, do you have a question? Okay, I think that was a no, right, Michelle? Okay. Siva, do you have a question? Anyone here, Jonathan, Jennifer? Nope. Lisa, you're the only one have a question, so if you have other questions, you can go on.
So since several buildings, several districts in our county and in our state are closing buildings or classrooms, I'm curious how we know how many students in each building and each classroom are either testing positive or quarantined? Where would we find those numbers?
So we have that data by building, so the elementary keeps it by class. The middle school and high school, they keep it by grade level, since they switch classes. As far as when are we going to close the class, you're looking at, once you start getting over 50%, then we have that conversation. Again, we're not looking at 50. 50% in quarantine.
Five zero.
Correct. If you had 15% in quarantine, that means you have 85% of students live in front of you.
Yeah, I just want to know where I can find those numbers, because I, if it's by class, by, who holds on to those? Classroom teachers, classroom building principals, where do I find that?
Correct. So the building principals have the number of those that are in quarantine. As far as the number that have tested positive, that data is readily available on the dashboard, and we also send out the email daily with any new cases, but they hold the quarantine totals by school.
You know, it's a rolling 14-day quarantine, so every day it's going to be a different number, and I'm just wondering, you know, I want to make sure we're monitoring it to get to, if we get anything close to 50%. So somebody is monitoring the, you know, day 13, and next day, a couple people off quarantine, but maybe more people go on quarantine. Someone is controlling all these numbers and deadlines and dates of quarantine.
Yes, the building principals have that.
I can check up, check with you afterwards, but I could find this easily if I asked, you know, you, someone's central office has all these numbers from all these principals, right?
No, the building principals, we don't compile it as a whole, the building principals keep that data, and we have conversations. For example, I had an elementary principal text me two days ago, "Pat, we have 18 students in elementary class, nine are quarantined." We had a conversation, okay, it's 50/50, we're going to keep those that are still in person in person, but if we have another student go out, that kind of tips us over the 50%, and then that class will go remote until the quarantine ends for everyone. So again, we're trying to make a case-by-case decision, but the building administrators have all of that.
I appreciate that, I just wish that there was some central place that we gathered all the numbers, and someone was monitoring it, so at any given time, we would know how many classes were close to being quarantined and where they were, but, you know, if everyone's doing this in a silo, it seems like it would be hard to, for somebody to check on that.
Right, well, they're not going to, keep in mind, they're not going to make a unilateral decision. You're not a building principal sitting there saying, "Okay, now I'm going to close the classroom." All right, now it's time to call OCHD again, get an update from them, they'll talk to either, you know, Todd or myself about, here's where we're at, then we'll have a conversation, and then we'll make the decision.
All right. Anything else, Lisa?
No, that's all, thank you, thanks, Pat.
Oh, thank you.
Okay, staffing update?
Staffing update, next slide, please. So we have 229 that recovered or returned, we have two currently staff that are quarantined, 24 that are active FMLA, and two workers or two employees that are on workers' comp. As far as where we're short, still down seven pairs, we're down 31 preschool and latchkey employees, and we're down seven drivers. Again, looking at 2019 and '20 resignations compared to new hires. Next slide, please. As far as what we're hiring for right now, we need two additional instructional assistants at Wing Lake, we need one social worker, three latchkey Kid Zone teachers, and one supervisor, we need 18 bus drivers to get back to full capacity, and we now need one bus mechanic, six pair educators district-wide, one elementary, one K-8 art, and one resource room teacher. And this is pretty much the new norm, not just for us, Oakland County, Michigan, but throughout the United States, trying to fill in staff during the school year. You think back a decade ago, most of us had our staff in place by May, and it was rare you would have to hire during the school year, if something weird literally would have to happen. Now it's ongoing staffing and hiring throughout, there's no true season, per se. Next slide, please. All right, thank you. President Colin, I'll turn it over to you.
Yep. I'll see if anyone's hands up to expedite this, I don't think I need to go through each of the person, I don't see anything in the chat.
Aside from maybe bus drivers, it looks like those numbers are less than they were at the last report, so is that the case? Have we been successful in filling up some of those deeper holes that we used to have?
Yes, we continue to make progress, and one thing I do want to point out with staffing that's not on this report, that I think is important for everyone to know, is part of our students being back and knowing that school, when we're back full-time next year as well, that our students are going to need more support when it comes to social, emotional. So we are going to make sure that at every building, we have a full-time social worker. In the past, we've had social workers that are split between buildings, we're not going to be doing that. Every building will have a full-time social worker to support our students, and I think that's important to know.
Okay. Howard, you have a question?
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't hear. Okay, yes, please. I see that we are, we have lost one of our bus mechanics. Bloomfield Hills Schools has an incredibly exemplary record in terms of bus inspections through the state of Michigan. I think we only have, am I right, maybe two or three bus mechanics on staff, so this sounds like it's a pretty major loss for this district, am I right?
It is, and so we will need to do some recruiting to not only find a bus mechanic, but find the quality that we're looking for to replace the person we lost.
Okay, do you know how many years of seniority this bus mechanic had?
I do not. I can find out, I do not know.
If it was, if it was someone who is relatively short-term, that'd be one thing, but if it's one of our long-term employees, this a major blow for this district. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, I don't see any. We will go to Building Summer Programming. Superintendent Watson?
Thank you, President Colin. I will turn it over to Mr. Bidlak.
This is Susan Goliev, I'm actually going to take it from here.
Oh, okay.
We're going to actually start with the school learning updates on the next slide. So in accordance with Public Act 165 of 2020 of the State School Aid Act, as a district, we are responsible for monitoring our learning progress while engaged in a COVID-19 learning plan design. The district extended COVID-19 Learning Plan, ECOOL, Progress Monitoring Transparency Report that you see here on this slide, is comprehensive, it encompasses all the planning, learning design, professional learning, and available learning assessment data. The BHS Midyear Progress Report well exceeds the required reporting required by MDE. As a district, we committed to reporting at both the mid-year and end-of-year on the above-listed goals that you see here on the slide. Recognizing the current impacts the pandemic has had on the instructional time, the critical core areas of literacy and mathematics has been prioritized. In January, the building teams convened in a district teaching and learning council meeting alongside parents and board members to study the benchmark data in the areas of literacy and math in relation to these goals that you see on the slide. Teams determined areas of need and areas of strengths, they developed target areas to dig further into, and in a moment, you will be hearing from each building, some of the key highlights from the ongoing continuous improvement cycles, gather, plan, study, and do, that each building is engaging with and has always been engaging with in any year, not just in a pandemic year. In the next slide, as a district in a building by building, BHS is committed to engaging in ongoing cycles of continuous improvement. In spring of 2020, as we wrapped up the school year in the early months of the pandemic, teams met to review the pacing of curriculum, noting areas students may have had less time working in due to the shift to distance learning. The critical standards document, along with the anticipated multi-tiered systems of support, MTSS, were constructed around the areas of anticipated needs based on curriculum pacing. Like any other year, building teams will again in the late spring, review student learning data and teacher notes on curriculum pacing to plan forward, anticipating and preparing for areas to offer additional support. I'm going to turn this over to Carrie.
If we could move to the next slide, please. So what you see here, our district has assessment cycles on a regular basis, and so this is just sort of a sampling of how our layers of assessment work across the system, and this is just a sampling, this is not all-inclusive of everything we do, particularly this year, but these are the layers that we use to get to targeted instruction with our students. FastBridge is new this year, we switched from NWA, which we used last year, and we're continuing to learn the suite of assessments available to us in FastBridge within our illuminate system, which is our data warehousing system. As we learn more, we will be able to utilize the tools within FastBridge to continue on with our intervention process with our students and also progress monitor our students. So there are pieces that we are still engaged in professional learning on with this system, but assessment does, the assessment delivery span does go across in-person and our distance learning delivery formats this year. So one of the ways that we get down to targeted instruction is our FastBridge screener, which we give in reading and math, and it will show up in a report to say that our students might be at some risk or really at risk. And once teachers have that information in their hands, they can drill down further, for example, with our Fountas and Penel reading assessment, where a teacher sits down with a child to listen to them read, and they can look at their accuracy, their fluency and comprehension, to figure out where to target instruction for a child or a group of children for intervention or support, or to increase their reading proficiency. FastBridge is super quick at telling us, again, it's a screener, on who those students might be that we need to drill down further with, and we can compare that to what we're seeing in the classroom as well. So just an example, you could move to the next slide, please. So that was just a reference point, so just kind of recapping, so back on January 25th, we brought members of school teams from each site together to review building-level data. We wanted to take time to see how kids were doing this year, particularly this year, across our entire system, and we wanted to make decisions around what next steps we might take based on the data that we were uncovering. We first had teachers do grade-level data digs back on January 15th, and then we met at our January 25th TLC meeting, Teaching and Learning Council, to really study that data across the building and each site. So school teams brought parents, PTO members, teachers, school improvement teams and team members, and we had board members there as well, that were reviewing this building-level literacy and math data that we're discussing. What you see in the slide are typical types of questions that we used at the Teaching and Learning Council, but they're used throughout each building team's school improvement process. Our teacher-grade-level teams that discuss data, our BIT teams that discuss data, use these questions quite often, and then again, in school improvement teams. So we use these as we engage in our data dig. When we were back at TLC on January 25th, we had discussions around some of these questions and the data, which then led us to what our building targets might be this year to best support students. So our next TLC meeting is scheduled for the beginning of June, and what you're going to see tonight, outlined from building principals and leaders, is what their targeted areas were and what they've been focusing on this year based on those data and as part of continuous improvement. You're going to hear tonight some updates from each of our principals about how their staff has engaged further in reviewing their building-level data and goals. We've also shared some of this data in our ECOOL report that was put out this year, as requested at our January 25th TLC meeting. You will hear how buildings are engaging families in part of this process as well with their goals or in support of their targeted goals. You may even hear how buildings are using data to intervene on behalf of students academically and socially and emotionally, and you're going to also hear some points of pride from each of our buildings and things that they've been focused on and they're very proud of within their building sites. So I'm going to turn it over now to Principal Jen Teal, and you will hear about BV first.
Good evening. I'm hoping that everyone can hear me all right. We had a little bit of technical difficulty, so I'm on my phone. President Colin, I'm, I, is my sound okay?
Yes, your sound's okay. Thank you.
Okay, fantastic. I'm sorry that you can't see my beautiful face. So you just have to listen to my voice. So when we looked at our reading data at Bloomfield Virtual, the teachers really spent some time thinking about the patterns that they were seeing, and there were a couple of areas that we decided to target. And one of those, with Bloomfield Virtual being a little bit different from the other school-building situations, we realized that we were wanting to engage with families a little bit more, and we engaged in a survey to better understand what our families were wanting to find out about home literacy practices and how we teach young elementary students to read and to improve their reading. And based on those survey results, teachers were able to create videos, live tutorials, additional support materials, and add to a support area on the BV website to really partner with families on those home literacy practices. Additionally, teachers were able to notice that there were some needs in phonemic awareness for students, as well as some needs in comprehension and inference skills, and so they targeted their instruction, expanding a little bit on the amount of time that they dedicated to phonics, as well as to comprehension and inference in the upper grades, and they're excited to look at how that spring FastBridge and other data is able to reflect those choices that they made to support the students. If you can go to the next slide for math, please. When we looked at math, math is really interesting when you have to teach it virtually, and one of the noticing things from our data was that students were struggling a little bit with making their thinking visible, and that made a lot of sense to us because they were learning virtually, and so our teachers responded to that data by thinking about what we could be sending home for students, so things like physical whiteboards, looking further into digital whiteboard apps, our younger students having some manipulatives sent home, and some of our older students having online manipulatives. And we also were noticing the need for some differentiation in math groups, and so teachers have responded to that by experimenting with small groupings for math practice and shifting a little bit the way that they were spending whole-group versus small-group instruction time, and again...
Excuse me, excuse me, we're still on, there we go, now we're on the math slide, thank you.
Oh, so sorry. So teachers continue to be excited to look at the data that reflects those targets that they've had in math, both in FastBridge but also in InVision itself, looking at the way students are responding to those individual questions. The last slide, if you can go to the points of pride slide, please. These are just some things we wanted to share with you that we are proud of at Bloomfield Virtual. Definitely a focus on collaboration and a sense of community within the staff. The staff has worked incredibly hard to work together, especially in their grade-level teams, and have spent a lot of time this year really focusing on how to deliver high-impact writing and math workshop approaches in a virtual environment. Lots of innovative technology use, I'm sure you'll hear that throughout for all of our teachers and students. We're really proud of the focus on social-emotional learning and the way we've anchored that in literacy and books. We had a book study as a staff and have invited family members into that around the book stamped, and lots of opportunity for family engagement. You can see some of the examples there. So I will now be passing it along to Mr. Russo from Conant. Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. As Carrie had pointed out earlier on, a lot of our actions that we're taking and our targeted goals derive directly from formative assessments we're taking, and you'll see that through our reading and our math. see that through our reading and our math. On the lower L, you'll see we're really focusing on phonemic awareness and phonological awareness. Teachers are, are meeting in small groups, meeting one-on-one with students to address those needs. And we continue to look at formative assessment as we, as we instruct, through, you know, running records, looking at Fastbridge data, and exit tickets on a daily basis. On the upper grades, we're really focusing on fluency comprehension and inferencing that falls within that, so we can improve our comprehension. Some examples, and these are not, you know, all-inclusive, we use Reader's Theater, we use reading small, you know, reading passages, small group reading instruction daily. We use word study, we conference with students, and we have spelling and vocabulary activities that help with our reading fluency. Again, looking at formative assessment, thank you, formative assessment, and exit tickets going on in the daily and the weekly, so we can see, we can progress monitor not only the big, you know, what we're doing through the weeks, so we don't wait for big assessments to measure whether we're, we're doing well or not. Can we move to math, please? In math, with two big focuses, we are enhancing number sense. And again, you'll see small groups is, is, is a big portion of how we're addressing that, those needs for students, and using math manipulatives, not only manipulatives for learning, but also for demonstrating learning. That's one of our forms of, our formative assessment are exit tickets. And then another goal that's probably a little bit different than, than we're used to is we, we focus on different assessment strategies so that we can, you know, improve how we deliver formative assessment and different ways we can use online assessments to gauge whether students are making progress. So Reflex is one of those, it's for automaticity of math facts, we use exit tickets and math manipulatives to demonstrate the learning. Next slide, please. Some, some of our points of pride, going into classrooms, one of my goals is every classroom every day, and I see daily social emotional learning experiences in every classroom every day. We're already seeing gains in, gains in reading comprehension and reading fluency. I see small group instruction in every single classroom every day. Our classroom libraries are flourishing, we're actually purchasing more books for, we just made that decision today to purchase more books for kindergarten and second grade. Interventions are being done inside and outside the classroom, so tier one interventions and tier two and tier three interventions. We have a good plan, we have a great format and a great plan for servicing the students who have to be quarantined for whatever reason. And we have, we have a huge value on professional learning and a positive culture that kind of continues us through as we, as we see these kind of strange times. With that, I will pass it on to our next presenter, who is Ms. Harleen Singh at Eastover.
Thank you, Mr. Russo. Good evening, I'm going to be presenting a little bit about Eastover, and I'm going to echo a lot of what our colleagues have already mentioned, that, you know, we, in, in, you know, in addition to using some of our bigger assessments, we're also making sure that we are doing our informal formative assessments to give us pretty frequent feedback from how our students are doing, and so we can engage our learners and kind of meet them where they are. So as we've done in previous years, really working on our growth in phonemic awareness for our younger learners, and teachers have really increased some of their direct instruction, and are allocating some specific time in the day for some of that instruction. We boost some of the resources that we've been using and just have had some more focused instruction, like I shared. In addition to that, you know, typically we partner with our families, and I think in this learning platform that we've had this year, whether it's a all-virtual or hybrid, we've really partnered with our families a little bit more so this year. And so our teachers have created some resources called Reading for Success at Home, and they're frequently engaging with our, with our families, sending resources, so families can also support their students at home with some of the phonemic awareness activities. For some of our older learners, we are working on fluency, comprehension, and inferencing skills, and those are skills that we truly have been working on, whether it's a pandemic year or not. We are trying to increase those skills for all our learners. And that is done, you know, again, typically what we've done in other years as well is just really focusing on small group instruction. So whether that is reading workshop, small, you know, small group book clubs, one-on-one instruction, just really supporting our learners where they are, and that's kind of where the formative assessments come in, as well as the Fountas and Penel assessments that we do, is just really engaging our students, understanding where their, their reading levels are, and focusing on some of the areas that we hope to see them grow. And again, really supporting our families by creating some videos, different lessons and activities that they can do at home to support their readers as well. When we move on to math, so again, math now is a little bit different than it has been. We really do want to engage our learners in some of those hands-on experiences using different manipulatives and really, you know, deepening their foundational skills and understandings. And so that is done by using manipulatives, different tools, different learning engagements and opportunities, whether it's, you know, online or just hands-on manipulatives. So we're, you know, continuing with some of that to just really develop some of their foundational skills. And again, just with this resource that we have in InVision, there's so much available to support that learning at home. So giving the families that educational piece as well, so they can use some of those online platforms and those opportunities that they have within that InVision math program. Moving on to points of pride, you know, we're really focusing on that social emotional learning and having those daily check-ins and that community building. Teacher PLC time really allows for that collaboration and that sense of community within our staff. You know, we're really proud of our teachers for being able to pivot and use a variety of instructional practices, no matter what that learning style is, again, whether it's distance, hybrid, you know, in-person, whatever they're doing, they really be able to quickly pivot and see what, you know, what their students need. We've had a lot of professional development and learning around technology. Our staff have created some interactive emoji pages for the classrooms, which is really helpful for both parents and for students. We've had continued opportunities for students to collaborate, again, whether that's in-person or online, we found ways to support that collaboration amongst our students, continued growth areas in literacy and mathematics, and high level of support and interventions for all our students. So with that, I would like to pass it on to Dr. Hillbury to talk about Lone Pine.
Thank you for having us here tonight. I'm happy to talk about what we've been working on at Lone Pine. Like the other buildings, we are focusing on both language arts and mathematics, and we utilize the process that Susan described earlier, where we really took a look at how our students were performing, where their strengths were, where their concern, where our concerns were, and built from there on our goals. So specifically, we have seen pretty good performance academically from our kids, and I would like to credit the really awesome partnership we've had between our teachers and our parents to support the academic progress of students during this very tumultuous year. We just could not have done it without parents doing a huge lift on their ends. So what we did notice when the kids were back with us were things that maybe you might expect for kids who have been home with an adult supporting them at their side. So students who were maybe not as confident in engaging in multiple strategies for solving problems related to mathematics and/or language arts, to kiddos who really just didn't feel like they had a strong toolkit, I guess, for approaching problem solving. We also saw some issues with fine motor skills, especially in our lower L. While the kids had awesome tech skills, their fine motor skills were needing a little bit of more practice and rigor. So what we targeted for both language arts and mathematics was that all students would begin to use the goal-setting process to support a growth mindset and encourage the independent use of multiple strategies in problem solving. And that's for both mathematics and language arts. So some of that is designed to build independence. For example, students reflecting on a strategy when they use it, did it work for them, did they feel confident using it? Providing self-assessment tools for students, not only what the expectations are before they begin a learning task, but also the opportunity at the end of a learning task to self-assess and further reinforce, not only that they know the skill, but that they're capable of using the skill. So if you want to move forward to the mathematics slide, we also are focusing on bringing students on board to lead their student conference. So we call them family conferences or parent conferences, but we really want to emphasize the importance of students being involved in owning their own learning and driving their learning forward. And so as a part of that, we want kids to be involved in setting their learning goals for the year, reflecting on their learning goals over the course of the year, and sharing that growth with their parents. So again, as we put these building blocks in place over time, it's really fundamentally about the kids becoming owners of their own learning, being advocates for themselves, realizing that they have multiple ways to solve problems, and being able to draw on that toolkit that they've built. So if we can go to the next slide with the points of pride, there are all kinds of points of pride on here. Our teachers and school community members utilized additional supports and strategies to meet the increased social emotional needs of all students, that was a huge emphasis for us this last calendar year. Students are, teachers have articulated that students really seem to understand and connect better with their feelings, they're able to talk about them, label them, and express strategies for dealing with feelings throughout the day. We have improved our formative assessment processes through team and fame goals. We are providing robust virtual and face-to-face interventions at all levels, general ed and special ed. Our Student Action Team has continued to meet and undertake service projects for the community, and the kids are still really excited about being out there and helping others. I mentioned earlier the incredibly strong partnership that we've enjoyed between the staff and our families, that's really been the core of our student success over the last year, I can't highlight that strongly enough. Another thing that we're very proud of is staff morale and culture. This has just been such a challenging year for all of us, but I could not be more proud of my staff and the positive energy and enthusiasm they bring to every day, and, you know, the curveballs keep coming and they keep stepping up. I also want to highlight the partnership between the building staff and other departments, everybody from tech to physical plant services to finance to human resources. Every aspect of our district is working to make things successful for our kids, and we could not do it alone. We really, just everybody needs a shout-out for, for working together to make school work this year, and for our kids to experience as much normalcy as possible, given the times that we're in. Our students are showing great excitement and awareness for use of multiple strategies for math and language arts, and reflecting on what strategies work for them. I saw that in action in a kindergarten room for today, where kids were reflecting on the strategies and self-assessing with a rubric. And they, they get very excited to demonstrate that they know what they're doing, and they're showing great pride in that. Our teachers have also noticed that they have really formed very strong personal connections with students due to their smaller class sizes and the hybrid schedule, they feel just a really tight sense of community this year, stronger than it even typically is. As I mentioned earlier, we have developed some amazing new tech skills and proficiencies among students and staff. Some of my staff who really were not confident with technology are rocking out the technology this year, and that is something really exciting to see. And finally, our last point that I mentioned earlier is our achievement, academic achievement of students is holding steady with pre-pandemic years, and I really credit that to the strong partnership we have with our families. So on that note, I'm going to hand off to Mr. Sharon from Way Elementary School.
Good evening, everybody, and thank you again for the opportunity to talk with the board. Before I get started, again, I just want to shout out to two of our staff members who were part of this TLC process, starting back in January before I even knew I was coming to the Bloomfield Hills, Jen Rossi and Leah Haydenberg, they've done a fantastic job, not only starting this and moving it along, but definitely bringing me up to speed as well too. So I'll, I'll try to keep my comments to what I've had personal experience with over the past six weeks, since I've been at Way, going through our process. The first one to talk about is, is math, and I think whether the, through that process, one of the target areas that we were taking a look at is really taking a look at helping students understand and comprehend word problems in mathematics. And I, I think that for a lot of reasons why I think that was picked, probably primarily was, you know, when you're, when, in mathematics, when you're doing word problems or in the common core, you're also writing word problems based upon equations that you have. It takes additional skills other than just understanding the equations and the operations. It's listening comprehension, reading comprehension, written expression, oral expression, all these skills that come in there. And probably the one aspect of mathematics that requires the most scaffolding, the most opportunities to confer between that intersection between the math curriculum, the teacher and, and the student. And I think that's probably one of the most challenging areas in a remote environment as well, too. So I can kind of see why I think they were very, very smart to, to pursue this in the area of mathematics, word problems. And so, and as you can see, they've been, we've been working on, with our staff members, building in these processes that we can, leveraging these, these learning experience, having our, our, our learning coach, Jen Rossi, go into the classrooms and work with our teachers, and try to engage in those higher-order think math practices that come along with word problems, because word problems do give you those opportunities. Decline Bloom taxonomy, and do more and more sophisticated work with math operations. So that's basically a quick summary of the math piece. Next slide on reading, please. And I think this ties in, and we talked earlier about it, I think, other classes, that invitation of the Reader's Workshop. And I think they took a really nice look back in January and said, you know, what is the one area that we can beef up this curriculum? And the Reader's Workshop, especially, you know, the Lucy Calkins readings workshop, is just a fantastic program because it just washes students and teachers in literature and texts, and they work so much with books and modeling and stories. And, and when a student comes to an unknown word when they're reading, they use all their sort, many sources of information to be successful. And of course, and the Reader's Workshop really helps you deal with the comprehension, the meaning up into that word that you encounter, to help figure it out. And what Mari Clay calls getting good reading on the ear, because there's so much modeling and teacher reading in the classroom, that you understand the cadence, the phrasing of good reading and how it sounds, and how to observe the punctuation, dropping your voice at a period, raising it a question mark. And that Reader's Workshop supports that in such a rich way, it also supports the students' understanding of how stories work, which really kind of helps them encounter, read, read words too that they encounter. This is why we're, you know, our parents are wonderful when you read your kids at home, and this is what the skills you're building. One of the areas I think the staff found, and I think many districts find with the Reader's Workshop, is the idea that it's probably weakest at the source of information of the, you know, the phonemic awareness piece. In other words, the student's ability to recognize and put sounds together into morphines and meaning, and what we traditionally sometimes call decoding, goes back to, if you remember from your days of teaching reading, if your goal is me, diphthongs, blends, vowel digraphs, all those pieces as well, too. So long story short, or I guess this would be, you know, short story, long way I'm telling it, our goal right now is to really work on not only being able to teach phonemic awareness more, more directly, so students have that additional source of information in an unknown word, because we want them to coordinate all those sources of information, but also understanding within a workshop format what each student, where they're at in their decoding skills and their phonemic awareness skills, so that we can provide during conferring very direct instruction to individual kids to make sure that we're teaching them what they need to know. Are they looking at, do they know their vowel digraphs, their clusters, their blends, and et cetera? So that's probably our major focus right now would be in reading. And one of the things that we're working on right now, that one part of this presentation I've personally been part of, because we've had a professional development day since I've been at Way, is we're, right now, we're testing out and we're piloting different assessment tools for phonemic awareness and phonics for our students to use in each grade level. And the last step we just did was have each teacher, or our select teachers from each grade level, present case studies of a student and the data they received on the tool they're using. And then we're going to take all that information from that PD, and at the end of this year, we're going to have to decide on one tool that we're going to be using, either across grade level, or if applicable, across all of our grade levels. But the idea is really to kind of make sure we find the right tool, so that we can go ahead during those conferring pieces and really help get direct instruction. And again, we want to teach these skills, not on a list, but embedded in text, which is what makes the workshop such a wonderful curriculum. So that's kind of where we're at in reading. Next slide, I can talk a little bit about our points of pride. There's several up there, there's really just one that I've had a lot of experience with, and really going back to what Jen Rossi's been doing with our pride, our social emotional learning piece, all through March, the kids, the units we taught in our dens for our students really focused on the, on include. really focused on the inclusion, not only being able to understand the concept of collusion, inclusion, but how we practice that as well. And this month, we've been really working on the self-care and self-awareness, the physical, emotional, social, spiritual aspects of self-care within, for students to take care of themselves in the classroom. And I've got to say, and I, I'm sure, there's got to be a direct connection between all this effort and work going in for pride. And going into what I'm seeing is somebody's coming into the school from the outside. I'll give you a classic example. This week, I saw the kids playing bocce ball on the playground. I saw soccer games. I see them interacting in the lunchroom, in the hallways, and talking. There's such a great culture, such a caring culture. It really has been remarkable. And, and I think it's nice for somebody, for me, coming from the outside can sit there and say, wait a minute, you have something special. This is really working. They're doing a really nice job with this. And I think even today, I went out for fourth grade recesses, checking it out. And I, and again, in 30 years of elementary, I never really saw a kickball game go without a fight or an argument. And these students were out there following the rules, no adults around. I was in the outfield watching, but you could just tell they have a sense of fairness, a sense of belonging and caring that's not typical that you see in many other organizations. So, so that's the one I picked out to talk about tonight that I think that I have. I'm happy to be associated with our points of pride, and they did just a wonderful job. So that was my presentation. And I, I think the next one up will be Bloomfield Hills Middle School, but I think I saw on the chat that we might want an opportunity to ask questions after the elementary presentation, so I'll leave it there.
Yes, thank you. So before we forget, the presentation's the elementary school. So I'm going to see if some of my colleagues have questions specifically for the elementary. So I'll start off with Howard.
Thank you, President Cullen. Few things. First, I'm, I love the lone pine from Dr. Hillberry with the star with the mask on it. That was, that was wonderful little touch. Also, I really want to compliment the presenters for putting in the MyKIP graphic in there. That's a new program that MDE is rolling out to all school districts around the state. And it's very exciting, very exciting to see that being embraced by Bloomfield Hills schools so quickly. There's been a lot of talk about data, but in the presentations that we just saw, I didn't see any data presented. So what I'm, or at least, you know, numerical data. So I'm wondering, back in the original, one of the first slides was talking about our ECOLE educational goals, both on reading and math. It talks about that we are on, that, you know, we, our goal will be on track to make a year's worth of academic growth during the 2020, 2021 school year. So I'm wondering, for each one of the buildings, I know that Dr. Hillberry mentioned a little bit about the, on the reading, but I'm just wondering how the buildings are doing towards achieving that goal by the time we get to the end of the year in a month or two.
That's a, that's a great question, Howard. Can everybody hear me using this mic? I think I'm the first one using it. Can you hear me also online, Howard?
Yes, yes, sir.
All right. Terrific. That's a, that's a great question. And you might remember when we presented on the ECOLE that I think this was back in about mid-January, and Carrie will probably correct me if I get my times a little bit wrong. But at that time, we were looking at the FastBridge data in terms of really tracking around one of the areas we were most concerned about when this pandemic started, and that was early childhood literacy. Now, COVID has also impacted assessment practices, like has impacted everything else. So we were a little nervous with the outcomes on FastBridge, that they were telling us that we appeared to be on track and that we weren't necessarily seeing large losses. And so we were really questioning that because we knew the environment around FastBridge was compromised because students weren't necessarily doing that in person. So we were really shying away from really using that particular student outcome data source as being able to stake claim of where we believe our students are at right now, all the while knowing that the, an incredible measure is, is the anticipation that teachers have with the students that are in front of them on a daily basis. They really know they're students. And however, with some of the data outcomes that we're just getting, we were just looking at them, I think, a couple of days ago. It was remarkable because we are really seeing with these preliminary numbers that we appear to be on track or within a few percentage points of where we were pre-pandemic around early childhood literacy, based on our benchmark assessments that we're using. So we're still a little bit nervous about that and cautious. However, that last assessment, that benchmark that we were using, largely that was given in person with more of a traditional assessment practice with the teacher and student within proximity. And even though we have Bloomfield Virtual also giving a similar assessment, but giving a virtual response to that, that average for Bloomfield Virtual was almost identical to what we saw in the four in-person buildings. Bloomfield Virtual should be almost like a small sample set of where the district is at. So being that those two numbers really correlated for us, we're starting to get a little bit more confidence that those outcomes in the assessments may be telling us good information based on where our students are at. We have more assessments coming up. Students just took the Mstep. We are just moving some of those assessment practices that we have traditionally in the spring. So we'll have more data available as we move into later spring. The difficulty with our winter data, why we've never really wanted to come out and make a bold claim on that, is because we were transitioning from a virtual setting to a hybrid setting. There was a lot taking place during that time, so we just didn't have the confidence necessarily that, that that information was accurate. As the spring data comes in, it's starting to validate that that winter data may have been accurate for us. So we're getting a little bit colder, trustee Howard, in terms of really having confidence of what that data is telling us. So, but it is studied at classroom and building level and district level as well, as we kind of monitor one of those areas that we've really been most nervous about since last March. Carrie, was there anything to add to that? Perhaps other upcoming assessments or?
Can I do a little follow-up first?
Absolutely.
Okay. So you talked about literacy. Is that whole true also, what you said related to math?
Howard, we don't have a similar spring assessment for math, so we'll have to utilize FastBridge again.
Right.
And so, so for that area, we may have to wait a little bit longer before we can give you the same type of confidence in terms of what we're looking at. But if FastBridge turns out that that winter data was accurate at the time, because that's really what we questioned. We didn't want to come out and say, oh, you know, our, the FastBridge data is really suggesting that our students are doing okay. That ends up being true for literacy. It was also showing us that for mathematics as well at the elementary level. But we don't have another subset of assessment to put side by side to that right now in terms of what that testing condition looked like. So we'll have to wait a little bit longer. The Mstep data will be another great measure because that will allow us to take a look and compare that to pre-COVID assessment data as well. And that will help us with confidence, as soon as we have those measures back, to be able to give our, our first look of where we ended up after a year of pandemic learning.
So, but with Mstep, first of all, there was no Mstep last year. And second of all, the Mstep, we're not going to see that data. Todd, are you with me?
Yes, I am. I'm sorry, I'm looking for a bottle of water and there's nothing near me. Sorry. I should have grabbed this before. Go ahead, Howard. I can hear you now.
So, Mstep, you know, has two shortcomings. One, we don't have anything from last year to bear to, because there was no last year. And second of all, we won't see the Mstep data until, you know, September, October, November of 2021. So will we be able to get a FastBridge or a Fontin Spinel or some sort of assessment of where we are against these two ECOLE goals before we leave school at the end of June of this year?
Oh, districts, district assessments, absolutely, Howard. And in fact, I'm hopeful that if our students across the state of Michigan took the Mstep, then I think it should be on MDE to have, have more urgency than ever before to get those results back. And sometimes we get the preliminary results even before they are, while they're still embargoed. So we may have them internally even before we can release them. But traditionally, yes, they don't get released to the public until the fall, but sometimes we get those earlier. And if we can get a quick turnaround, that would, that would certainly be helpful.
So does FastBridge also, because hopefully using it as a parallel to Mstep, will it be able to do disaggregated data so we can see subgroups under the FastBridge information similar to what we see in Mstep?
I know that we're still having a little bit of a struggle with the platform of FastBridge and whether or not they would provide that service. So we may have to do that by hand. But either whether or not, whether they're able to provide that for us or we're able to do that on our own, we'll be able to get that data.
That, that would be wonderful.
We won't be limited to be able to pull that apart. We're just not sure how we'll be able to do that.
Obviously, all you're doing there is just taking the, the student themselves and, you know, slicing and dicing a little bit. So anyway, that would be wonderful if we could see, you know, because we do have these ECOLE goals, it would be great if we actually were able to see some data, you know, as soon as it's practicable, so that we can see how, how we're doing against that. Because that'll help us set our goals through MyKIP for the next school year. Thank you.
Yes, the, the ECOLE, it was due mid-year, and there was quite a bit of data in there. But we weren't necessarily willing to be, to be bold in terms of saying, we believe that to be accurate. We thought that that was compromised by COVID assessment conditions. And then there will be another ECOLE, another improvement cycle that will, that will be completed before the last day of school. So typically, we spend one school year to do two school improvement cycles. This year, we combined two with one in the first semester and one in the second semester.
Okay.
Very much.
Instead of going around, I could see everyone on screen and obviously everyone here is. Lisa, you have a question?
Yeah, first of all, I just want to, you know, express my, my gratitude for all of our staff, for the principals, for the teachers. It's been a year of, you know, just extreme challenges. And every time I see a presentation like this, it's like almost moves me to tears, especially hearing that the, the FastBridge story that Todd is alluding to is absolutely phenomenal, to, to have scores that he, he thought weren't valid because they were too high, and now find them to be validated is just really unbelievable. So that's really all I wanted to say was thank you. But alluding to Mstep, I, I know that this year there was, I'm assuming, a larger percentage of students who are opting out of taking it. Do we have any idea roughly yet how many students have opted out of taking Mstep?
Carrie, what, did we have about a 70% participation rate for Mstep? Or am I thinking of the SAT? SAT, maybe SAT was 73%? Am I giving a good approximation?
Yeah, SAT this week, and PSAT nine and 10 was given, and we had about a 73% participation rate.
And we, I know we make updates for PSAT already scheduled. Do we, do we have that for Mstep as well, for students who maybe are waiting for a couple of weeks and that's been published? Thanks again for everything.
We have flexibility within those windows for anybody that wants to come in and test.
Excellent, thank you.
You're welcome.
And we should have enough of a data set, even with 73%, even though that all, we knew not all children would take that assessment. But that is enough for us to be able to use for data purposes, to make inferences about where we at, where we're landing as a district as a whole. So it's enough children to be able to use that data. It'll be meaningful to us. If we were down to like a 20, 25% participation on that, it probably wouldn't be very useful data, other than to the child that, that took the assessment. So we're probably at a bound number where we'll be able to use that and then be able to present that back, and we'll be able to make some conclusions for it. But Lisa, you're absolutely right. It, it is absolutely impressive how our students and teachers and partnership with the parents have pulled through over the last 13, 14 months. It's, it's absolutely extraordinary to be able to look at where we are ending up as, as a district. So more information should be available as we move through the assessment process of the springtime. And as always, our district assessments are always more valuable to us than the state assessment. So, and that.
Yeah, couldn't agree with that more, sorry. To me, as a parent, and yeah, I, I, I can't reiterate that enough. So thanks for that perspective.
I don't have a question. I just wanted to echo Lisa's and Howard's. Commend you all on such great work with our students. And thank you for all that you continue to do. The words that I'm hearing you say, differentiated learning, print, family involvement, and advocacy, teaching students how to set their goals, and you're working directly with the students as opposed to talking at the students. And so I can definitely appreciate all that you're doing, and thank you for amazing presentations.
Okay, with that.
Ready for middle school? Jennifer, thank you for the water. You saved me. Thank you.
Paul, I had one very, very quick question. In one of the slides, there was a reference to MLPP. What is that?
I can take that one. So it's the Michigan Literacy Progress Profile. That's what the acronym stands for. And those are assessments that we typically give in kindergarten to assess students' abilities, like if they recognize their letters and sounds, their phonemic awareness, if they're hearing sounds and they're hearing rhyme. It also goes into concepts of print to understand what a kid knows about a book, if they understand that text goes from left to right, if they know how to turn the page. So it gets into early literacy skills.
Got it. That's, that's a thing that was introduced relatively recently, right?
Actually, that has been around since about 2001.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
It's been around a long time, and it's well-versed. And it's part of, there are similar assessments that we use in our reading recovery as well. They're very similar.
So that, that is a feat or two, you know, whether a student would go into reading recovery or not potentially in the first grade?
Well, for a kindergarten teacher, they help identify what skills are strengths for kids and where they still need support that lead into reading. And then are, those similar assessments are used in first grade to see if kids would qualify for reading recovery.
Gotcha. Thank you very much.
Okay, ready for middle school? For school?
All right, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
All right, well, I want to thank the board for giving us this opportunity, but I also want to put a quick thank you out there to our learning services team, our administrative team, all the individuals that helped move this work forward. Lisa, thank you for saying what you said, because you're right. This is a, has been a very difficult year, and it's taken a lot to move everything forward. And that includes the people working in the trenches, our teacher leaders, our IB teacher leaders, our interventionists, learning specialists. We think about our support staff, our teachers, our paras, our families and students. It's a collective effort to move everything forward. The middle school is at that unique place because we want to support all the efforts that have been in place for, from our elementary schools and move that work forward. We also want to build upon those skill sets at the middle level and make sure that our students are prepared for the high school. So all of that is done through just a lot of collaboration and time working as educators, just making sure that our efforts are in sync and aligned to our district improvement plans, our school improvement plans, and that collectively as a group, we're moving our district forward. Very nice to hear our elementary themes and targeted goals, actions taken and further studies, because it's a lot of the work that you're going to hear at the middle school level and, and how that moves into the high school. So to talk a little bit about math-targeted areas and a lot of these concepts, you're going to hear a theme through East Hills and West Hills as well. Each of us are going to take some things that we highlight, and they look very familiar at each building. They might take on a little bit different look, but these are skill sets that we're all trying to develop. So as we focus on mathematics, there's a, a strong focus on reasoning and justifying mathematical solutions. And that ties into the next one, which is expanding problem solving and giving kids the, the knowledge and mindset that there are multiple ways to solve problems and to figure that out. But as a, as a staff, we want to make sure that But as a staff, we want to make sure that we were determining what these different tier-two interventions would look like for our students. So we've taken time from the beginning of the school year to the end of the school year, and I'll talk a little bit more about that when we get to our points of pride, just looking at how we're identifying focus areas and identifying students to make sure that we're always finding growth and improving on those skill sets. So as we look at mathematics, there's things like math resources and extensions of math resources. There's something called Another Look, where we have an opportunity to teach things inside of the classroom, but when students go home remotely, they can take another look at their work and practice it in a different way. You're going to see built into this presentation that there are Castle's core competencies or important skill sets in our students that we're attaching our work to. So for instance, being able to utilize different resources can be tied into good self-management skills. As we build through this, we want to make sure that we're consistently checking in with our students and providing them with good formative feedback and looking at the data that we're collecting on a continuous basis. We're looking at different, we have it built in here as ATLs, but it's our approaches to learning, and different modes of instruction, kinesthetic, visual, audio, anything that we can do to expand learning for our students and do that in a multitude of ways. It's looking at various instructional strategies to revisit, reteach, reinforce concepts, and building that into self-management skills, but continuously monitoring and adjusting interventions. The multi-tiered systems of support has been something that we've been talking about from the beginning of the school year and has been built into our professional development or professional growth plans. It's something that we've honored as a staff, and we've taken on and make sure that we've been dedicated to. The further study that you're going to see on the side, I'm just going to highlight three of them. The first one, which is fostering our culture through continuous growth and reflective teaching. As educators, we have to be able to reflect on the work that we do and make sure that we're always changing and modifying our approach so that it works for our students. And then down towards the bottom, identifying trends, patterns, successes, and challenges within data collection. We have to be really good at deciphering data and what that data is telling us. And also below that, providing strategies to further support students in their academic achievement, all students across the board. If we could move into reading, please. Another theme that I've heard from the elementary schools, and I know that we've been talking about at the middle school level, is just really putting a focus on figurative language, informational texts, and then again, focusing on what, in what ways we could build out these tier-two interventions to best support our students. Just to highlight some of the strategies that we've been using, it's not limited to this, but it's chunking and modeling, it's using graphic organizers, it's making sure that our students are reading at the right level and building their skill sets at the right pace. So working with them to read just write books. It's being able to help them monitor and reflect on the work. It's one thing for them to build a skill set, it's another thing for them to identify what they're learning and why they're learning it, and their own style of learning. It's helping them with mentor texts and being able to model as an adult, as an educator in the classroom. We want to be able to model what this looks like and, you know, promote that independence in their own skill sets. As always, we're going to connect things back to the formative process and good quality feedback. We know that the best way for our students to show growth is if we can continuously work with them and continuously talk about how they can best improve. That's built into great relationship skills that we have from teachers to students and students to students, but it's also responsible decision-making. As we look to the next page, because the further study is a carryover, just wanted to talk with everyone about what our plan has been across the board and probably the biggest point of pride at BHMS. And this is starting each year with a focus plan across the board, all staff members, building this into their professional growth plan, and making sure that we have a laser focus on what we're doing as a school, and then building that into our professional development and what we have on at least a monthly basis, our professional learning communities. So you'll see at the top, and this kind of all flows from one star to the next, it's starting the year through the guidance of our Learning Services team, just a real good focus on the multi-tiered systems of support. From there, our teachers identified two to three strategies that they wanted to use in their classrooms with our students and do that over an extended period of time, a month or two months. And then those teachers came back to a professional development session, and each one of them presented out on the tier-two interventions they tried. They talked about the strengths, they talked about the weaknesses, they talked about all the challenges surrounding this work with a major focus on student outcomes. And parentheses, data, 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 data. We want to make sure that we're being really mindful of what that data is telling us and how to work our, move our work forward. You know, I've built into the slide as well, our PLC and staff meetings, and this has been a major focus over the past, I'm going to say, five years, where we've talked about the formative process, all teachers using learning targets and success criterias in their classrooms. We made sure that we've been talking about specific instructional strategies that work for all of our students across the board, fifth through eighth grade or fourth through eighth grade, when we're talking east and west, building in these core competencies, building in our SEL data and what that social-emotional component has tied directly to academic learning as well. And I'll close out with our data digs, each of our buildings, making sure that we're consistently at the beginning of the year, middle of the year, end of the year, throughout the year, looking at data and what it's telling us about our students. If the board would like, at some point, I put a link to our professional development framework, and happy to look through that. It's got some of our presentations from the beginning of the year through now. So I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Geniak, our principal at West Hills Middle School. Thanks, Randy. Hopefully, my microphone's working. I know I got booted out earlier, so I haven't been able to test this.
We can hear you.
All right, good. There was a moment of silence there where I'm like, well, good thing I said that, because no one can hear me. All right. So thank you, Randy, and I appreciate you kind of launching our middle school work that we're doing here. And really, you know, as my team was preparing for this presentation to the board, we really just went back through the, all the opportunities we had to gather our staff together and to work in teams, starting back in January in particular. I think we ended up with about five professional development times over the course of about six weeks, which really gave us an opportunity to dig into the data that we had collected. So, you know, as Carrie mentioned, you know, we really, as teams, we dug into the FastBridge data in particular, and we took a look at those classroom reports, and then even went a little deeper into some of the individual student reports to really look at those skills that kids were struggling with. And so we were able to really try to target and identify a common theme. And across all our grade levels, there's slight variations as to what they're targeting, but much of that came back to academic vocabulary. With my wife being a fifth-grade teacher, we talk education a lot around the house, and, you know, she often references how, when she was teaching second grade, it was teaching kids how to, they're learning to read. And then as they progress through, while they're still learning to read, there's a lot more reading to learn going on. And I look at that at the middle school level, we're kind of balancing those two pieces. And so the academic vocabulary can be very overwhelming for kids. So that was one of those areas where, across the building, in some way, shape, or form, each of our teams are targeting that area. You know, there's, a lot of that comes into the small groups that they're forming. It's the strategies that they're really focusing on, helping students work with text features, looking for patterns, that inferential thinking, journaling about their process in reading. With that, it's having the appropriate resources. So we've invested in beefing up our literacy library. Our fifth-grade teachers came to us, our fourth and fifth-grade teachers came to us and, you know, through their F and P assessment, they were able to really figure out levels where it's, where they can really have that instructional level with students, and making sure that we had the resources at those levels was something that we've been doing over the past few months. And really, all of this comes down to, again, helping students understand the more complicated vocabulary, which in turn will increase their comprehension. We're excited to look at the FastBridge data in the spring, you know, the ongoing formative stuff, whether it's through observations within the classroom, examining student artifacts, giving them feedback. All of those things are happening on a daily basis at West Hills. And again, that bottom goal is found both in reading and math, where we're really using this data to try to create our small groups where we can target skills within groups of kids and meet individual needs through that approach. And go to the next slide with math. And you've heard it from, definitely some of our elementary colleagues were talking about this being one of the goals at that level. And I think it's kind of like, it's like the JV and the varsity. It's like you're constantly building up the complexity of these multi-step word problems. You know, the math that we were taught, it was, you're going to do the evens, you're going to do the odds, you're going to do them all, that type of thing, a lot of repetition. We all know how language-rich the area of math is, and how you have to be a good reader, and you have to comprehend in order to be able to solve complex, multi-step word problems. So our teachers are being very intentional about teaching strategies to help unpack those word problems. And you can see on the slide in front of you, there are some of the actions and some of the skills that they're really focusing on within their classrooms each day. And that really is across the levels. And similar data will be used, and that's what we're going to continue to examine to see the, how successful our approach was. And, you know, we are using, really through MTSS, we're really trying to identify those interventions that we can do within the classroom. You know, you might be targeting two or three kids, but if there's a strategy that you're, you know that you're implementing within the entire class, that is, that is really targeting two or three kids, there's nothing to say that other kids are not going to benefit from that exact same strategy. And it happens in their classroom, with their classroom teacher, you know, in their gen ed environment right there. So that is some of the work that we've continued to do. And if you go to the next slide, what we've been with many new staff members, we've been, are we on the next slide?
No, not yet.
Not yet.
Thank you. There we go. Okay. So with many new staff members in many of these roles where they are supporting students, we've really begun to investigate and dig into our BIT process. We've surveyed our, our staff members to try to evaluate the effectiveness of the process that we have in place currently. Using the Sabers data that we had administered back in January, we analyzed that data and identified students where counselors did outreaches to families. And really, knowing that we were closing in on a year of living within a pandemic, trying to make sure that we were leaving no kid behind, we were making sure everyone's needs were being met. And finally, through our process of analyzing our BIT, we've begun to develop more of a prompter script to help facilitate, when we're looking at implementing interventions, we really, meeting as a team, we really want to make sure that those, that those meetings are, one, they're efficient, but they're really targeting what we need to address and intervene on. So that is something we've been working on. I'm excited to point out, to go through the points of pride here. Next slide, thank you. As I mentioned, we've been using data digs. I think you've seen it through pretty much everyone's slides, the social-emotional component. I'll tell you, I am loving watching our middle school kids have 15 to 20 minutes of recess on occasion. It's not every day. A lot depends on if they want to do an in-class lesson, but some of that built-in time in the middle school schedule right now involves having kids go outside and play. And whether they're nine or 14, it's, you see the, you see the nine-year-old come out and that 14-year-old, which is pretty awesome. So I've been enjoying observing that. We've really put an emphasis on making the thinking visible, so having more, moving from remote to in-person, and then supporting and continuing to work with our students who remained remote. What type of written work are they doing? What are they producing? How do you see their thinking? We were very deliberate and intentional, and I give Mrs. Palmieri, our associate principal, quite a bit of credit, as well as Laura Ametouli, our district-wide middle school media specialist, for really putting together some incredible resources for Black History Month, Women's History Month, and giving teachers just a ton of accessibility to implement these teachings in their classroom. Been so proud of our staff just adjusting and adapting. And beyond our staff, our students, they've lived through four or five different schedules and adapted and adjusted so quickly, which, you know, goes right into the next star there of, you know, just the positive culture, climate, and growth mindset that we continue to emphasize during this challenging time. And in the shift, I'd have to, I have to recognize, and I think Mr. Rubel's going to mention this as well, but the specials in Unified Arts teachers, they made a big shift in what they were doing, from going completely virtual all the way into the latter half of March, to now hosting in-person classes every day. So a lot of, a lot of credit goes to them, and we know the power that is held in their classes, especially when you go right back up to that social-emotional piece. Kids really crave those, those unique and special opportunities that they get in those specials in Unified Arts classes, and I'm really proud of all of our teachers for what they've been providing over the, over the past school year. With that, I'm going to send it over to Mr. Jason Rubel of East Hills, bringing home for the middle school.
Thank you, Andy. There obviously is some continuity between our different levels and programming. And thinking back to what Susan started with the presentation, those critical standards, not all standards are both the same in teaching and learning, and to be able to focus our attention on getting the biggest bang for the buck in our moves in our buildings is very important during the pandemic. And also, like, coming from the mantra of being an investigator as a classroom teacher or interventionist, you know, success leaves clues. That's the old Tony Robbins quote. And I would maybe argue that struggle leaves clues too. And every year, as an educator, that's a part of the gig, is being an investigator. So that theme has been present, and kind of looking at math at East Hills, formative practice, being attentive to the teaching and learning needs, and being reflective and reactive, and spending time in the foundational math skill. Sometimes you hear about reading recovery, you know, with math recovery steps too. I'm very proud of the work that Bridget Rainer does in literacy, Doug Thompson does in math in our building, and helping and guiding us through the use of FastBridge, previously MWVA, to really name those essential skills to focus on and work on. And then creating a culture where to err is human, and to look at the misconceptions, bring those forward, spend time in warm-ups as a math teacher, to identify them and work through them, and have a culture where it's okay to make a mistake, and to personalize and differentiate based on that. So that's probably the areas that I would focus on. And thankfully, the resources that we have with our big ideas in math really do support the use of looking at mistakes and misconceptions and guiding us in ways that we can approach that. Next slide, please. And then in reading, several areas, looking at the connection between literacy and writing, you know, being a good communicator across disciplines. That's a theme that starts early on, but clearly in upper elementary and into middle school, and we get into the distinct nature of disciplines, being attentive to how we communicate. And thankfully, we have a rich tradition of using the International Backglory at BlueBrids that blend in the ability to sort of acknowledge, what does it look like to be a communicator in those core areas, but also, what does it look like to be a communicator in our specials and elective programming as well. And so building out ways to grow and develop and be very attentive- and be very attentive in looking at claim evidence reasoning, looking at building that strong thesis, all the very skills that we are measured through M-Step and PSAT and beyond. Super encouraged about a culture of reading. You know, literacy is the gateway through all the other disciplines and developing a culture of literacy that reflects our students and using high-interest novels as a way to give access to a variety of perspectives. You know, sometimes the notion is that a mirror, right? It can reflect who you are, but it also can be a window into another world. So we've seen a lot of growth in just getting text in front of students and building interest and taking advantage of what COVID provides in terms of the ability to have that sort of personalized, independent reading model. And then our staff modeling reading, demonstrating the tenacious aspects of what it means to be a reader when you don't know words, bringing out that vocabulary and using the tools that we have access to through our workshop strategies, through Hawkins, and the close data collection and the intimate data collection that Fontis now provides us as educators. Next slide. Proud of a ton, you know, could have very full slide here. Super excited about our staff sharing how they're developing strategies to address the differentiated needs of our learners and being guided by very capable support staff as interventionists and modeling it after the wisdom of other buildings. Both Bloomfield Hills Middle and West Hills have a great culture around share-outs that we're kind of riding their coattails this year at East Hill. Love our media selection and the ability to bring in a range of literature, as I identified. The assessment culture that is rich in our buildings using a variety of tools. You know, named things like Fontis and now teacher-created rubrics through the IB that are guided and scaffolded all the way into high school. As Randy described, that importance of thinking about the next step there. And then very, very thankful for the resources. We would be in a very difficult position if our district hadn't gone out and gotten the kinds of resources in math and in ELA and in our subject areas that allow for digital access. I think of like even our One to World moves of, you know, five, six, seven, eight years ago, and the work that our different departments have done, LSP, IT, and beyond, really have set us up to lean into a very challenging year. Our kids are stepping up. Our teachers are doing a great job. The ability to provide mentoring opportunities, even though they're separated, our eighth graders supporting the writing of our fourth grader. And then as Andy was sharing, having our UA staff here is emotional. Hearing music in your building, hearing joy, seeing kids run, hearing world languages. I mean, this is what school is supposed to be. And the ability of our staff to adjust has been remarkable. And to other people's points, I think the closer you are to the children, the harder it's been. And so our parents and our teachers, who are working every day for our kids, I could not be prouder. And our job as support administratively, you all as board, to really engage that has been incredible. And then if I could move with one quick one, we just, we just had the PSAT. So I'm giving a little bit of bounce back, but, and I'm, the way that we organize that and the culture for our eighth graders was really, I was really impressed with our counseling staff and our teachers. But one story, really a seventh, had been a seventh grader, right? And I hadn't seen him because he was a remote student, came in. Looks like a young man now, so clearly some thrown in some ways there for sure. But he shared that he just really wanted to be back in our building. And that advocacy that I hadn't seen in him a year earlier just sort of speaks to, just, I don't know how that gets measured, but that warmed my heart about the ways our, our staff are connected with kids. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca Andrews to share a little bit about Wing Lake, unless we're going to pause at our level.
Yeah, we probably will pause just because, so my colleagues said they could remember the presentation if they have any questions, or maybe they don't have any questions. So I'll kind of look down the screen.
I was going to say, I was going to say this before, but this is really unbelievable. And it's like, it's sort of like watching someone you know is in good shape, but then all of a sudden they can just drop to the ground and do 200 push-ups in a row. I'm just really impressed, humbled, and grateful, grateful to all of the different agilities that you guys are displaying. And just a quick factual question, question for elementary. What is an exit ticket? I've only heard that term used with IT.
I can probably explain that unless anybody else wants to take it. But so an exit ticket is, so teachers use formative assessment strategies. It's something we've been working on as a district at getting better at. And some teacher teams have been through FAME Groups, Formative Assessment for Michigan Educators. So really, an exit ticket is where you've taught a piece of learning based on a learning target. And then you ask a question related to that learning target. And the kids fill it out at the end of the lesson to see if they've met the target or not. We can see how close they are to it, if they were at least on track or a little off, maybe need some support, or if they hit it and maybe even did above and beyond, so that we can differentiate learning for students. So that's essentially in a nutshell what an exit ticket is.
Anyone else, Lisa?
Yeah, I'll be really quick. I just, again, you know, want to thank everyone at the middle school level. It's, you know, rarely am I speechless, but it's just, like Jennifer said, it's so comforting to see and hear, especially with the stories. Principal English invited me one year to be part of the meeting where they so explicitly set goals, one of the meetings, and plan out what they're going to hope to accomplish for the year. And to think that, that they could stick with those goals and accomplish those things in this environment, you know, to come anywhere close to sticking to those goals with the challenges of this environment. It's mind-blowing. So thank you to all, all at the middle school level. I'm just, I can't say thank you enough. It's really, really reassuring to see such amazing work and hear amazing work being done.
Anyone else before we go on to Wing Lake? Okay.
Good evening. So I am here to tell you about Wing Lake and what we have been doing over in our building. For our exploration target areas, we are focusing on communication, SEL, reading, and math. Our goal for communication, our building goal this year is that all students will increase their use of core language. And core language is the 36 most common words that we use in our vocabulary. And so we use core language as the universal language at Wing Lake. When you're in our building, you'll see that the 36 core boards are everywhere. They're on students' desk, they're on our walls, they're on the Promethean boards, and they are all in a high contrast, so black background, so that our students with cortical visual impairments can see them well. So we are encouraging students to use their AAC, Augmented Alternative Communication Devices, whether or not it's low-tech, which is paper or laminated core boards, or high-tech, which is their iPads or other devices that are provided by Oakland schools. We want our students to improve their functional use of core language throughout the school day. And so currently, we are reviewing our data on our building goal. And I just want to say that we, all day long, every day at Wing Lake, encourage student voice. And I could not be more proud of our staff, who treats all of our students every day with dignity. They speak to our students, not at our students. They are really good at not talking about students around students, but rather speaking directly to our students and making sure their communication and their thoughts and feelings are a part of everything that we do at Wing Lake. So we are also focusing on social emotional learning. And honestly, that's something that we've done forever at Wing Lake. And so we, now it is more intentional. We have a school-wide SEL toolkit. We have weekly sharing of SEL lessons via learning templates that go out over Google Classroom, and we have monthly themes. And this month, our theme is self-care. And so we've just really focused on making SEL intentional. And so one of the ways that staff are doing this is they made it do a shared reading experience for students, where they go to the media center or from their own classroom inventory, pick a book and they read it. And in that book, they've already went through and highlighted all of the core words as well as sticky note all of the themes that relate back to SEL. And so we're having all of the, all of conversations all day long about SEL. Next slide. You know what? We skipped one slide, so if you could go back, please, to the reading and math. Thank you. So at Wing Lake, reading and math is embedded in everything we do all day long. When we're out on the playground, we're counting how many steps students are taking, how many steps it takes to climb up the ladder. When we're in the classroom, we are counting at lunchtime how many bytes students are taking, how many, you know, basically everything. We are embedding reading and math, and we've done that for many, many years through our literacy and numeracy routines. So our focus this year is alphabet and phonological awareness. We had professional development in November on this with a consultant from Oakland Schools, really focusing on each letter sound and letter awareness. And then for math, we had Sean Avite from Oakland Schools come out recently over Zoom in February and do some PD with us on learning new routines for teaching numeracy to students with cognitive impairments. We use unit assessments and then our K3 reading diagnostics to formally assess our students. And our school improvement and curriculum teams meet monthly to discuss these areas. So many points of pride to share about Wing Lake, but one of the first things that I want to say is that our students, 99% of them are unmasked. And our staff have worked with our students since day one back in the building in September with zero complaints. Have we been anxious? Have we been fearful? 100%. Have we made it work? And have we provided excellent education through an instruction during hybrid, during virtual, and now back in the full-time? 100%. And because of that, we have strengthened, actually the silver lining of all of this. If you could put the slides back up, David, I'll be lost without it. But the silver lining of all of this is that we have strengthened our homeschool relationships. So before the pandemic, we could not, we didn't have the time to do training with parents and to get them all of the materials to incorporate everything that they needed in the home setting. We did our best with that, but we didn't have the time like the pandemic allowed us. And so now, through all of the virtual opportunities, teachers and staff, instructional assistants, program aides, we've been modeling for parents how to support the children at home. Parents have connected with other parents and gotten to know each other. And they have commented to us that they're truly communicating with their children now more than ever. At Wing Lake, we are putting stringent cleaning and PPE protocols in place, taking all of the considerations for working with unmasked students included and at hand. We have improved collaboration and coherence across grade bands. So we have a preschool, elementary grade band, middle school, high school grade band, and adult transition grade band. And now more than ever, every year, the teams, the grade bands give me curriculum maps. But now more than ever, the lessons and things that we're doing weekly with students are similar across the grade band. We have done weekly lesson templates since April by grade band. Lots of professional development. The trauma and social emotional learning professional development has been really beneficial for our staff. And we have been very flexible when it comes to our changes. All of the changes we've had to go through, adapting, adjusting. And even now, you know, we're still having to, every, unfortunately, close classrooms. And teachers are reverting right back from being full-time in the classroom to full-time virtual teaching and learning for the students. And that, you know, I had to close a classroom today. And within three hours of shutting that classroom down, the teacher got out an explicit email to parents of all of the times they would be online during the next 14 days, all of the lessons and things that their students needed for the next couple of days. And it was simply amazing. Our staff morale and our culture, I would say that we are very supportive of one another. We're a very strong team. And more than anything too, we have been super appreciative of everything that Physical Plant Services has done to support us. IT, little story for you, a year and a half ago, in MyStar, the phone numbers and emails for parents were from when students enrolled, some 20 years ago. And so we were not sending out information electronically until about a year and a half ago to families. So imagine if we hit March 13th and we were unable to send messages to families and get every one of them to their emails and text messages. So we, again, just cannot thank everyone enough for your support. And I could not be more proud of our staff, who really have gone above and beyond to work with our students who are unmasked. And also our parents, they've been really understanding through all of this, and I'm grateful for them too.
Thank you, Rebecca. Howard, do you have a comment for Wing Lake?
Yes, a couple of things. First, Rebecca, from the whole board, we send our condolences for your recent loss.
Thank you.
It's a very trying time that Wing Lake always has when these kind of things happen. And they unfortunately happen all too frequently. On a happier note, could you tell us what your plans are, if any, for graduation ceremonies this year?
Sure. So we have opted to keep virtual this year. We feel it is in the best interest of our students. We are not mixing cohorts of students at all at this time from the minute the students come to the building. And as far as graduation, we have four graduates or four students exiting. And we have also opted to do the drive-bys again this year. We would love to have some more board members join us. It was really fun last year. The parents were really appreciative. But that is how we are opting to do things, as we want to make sure we're keeping the rest of the building as safe as possible for everyone since we are in school through the end of June.
Very good. If you could, if you could loop Rebecca into when that timing is, we'd greatly appreciate it.
Will do.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else before we go to Bowers?
Waiting for the...
Okay. So maybe you didn't hear.
There we go. Okay, thank you, Board and Superintendent Watson, for having me tonight. In kind of following suit, the exploration target areas for Bowers have been on, has been an SEL focus with increasing student engagement and connections, and also the literacy and math target goals as well. So as far as increasing student engagement and connections go, staff have been involved in a professional learning data dig using the Libratory by Design framework to investigate student engagement and correlations between engagement and connection. We've been using a program called PERTS Copilot and also the Sabers, My Sabers data to kind of analyze the connections and engagement that students are having. We're also focusing on experiential learning to enhance literacy and math skills. We have the really unique opportunity on the farm to have some really amazing, hands-on, experiential learning opportunities. And so I just wanted to take a moment to highlight two of those. The embryology program that is kicking off right now is an opportunity for students to utilize skills from their coursework. And that's coursework across the board, specifically, specifically English, personal... And that's coursework across the board, specifically specifically English, personal finance and algebra two to support first grade students at Conan Elementary as they actively engage in the Bowers Farm Embryology Program. The students are working hands on to build brooder boxes, to engage with the students at Conan, to answer questions, not just from the students, but they're fielding questions from Bowers Farm staff and also Conan staff as well. So it's just been a really cool hands-on opportunity for students. When they get to use their learning in a really applicable way, everything just seems to fall into place. Another way that this is happening is with our spring hanging basket sales. Students are using both literacy and math skills as they're figuring out ways to utilize, plant, manage, market the hanging baskets. And it's just a really amazing way to enhance curriculum with authentic experiential programming. And none of this would be possible if we didn't have our amazing Bowers Farm. So we're super grateful to learn in the space. But additionally, besides the space, we're really, really grateful for the connections that we're able to make with the farm staff, with the district, with the community at large. The students are craving that kind of engagement piece that we've been missing out with COVID and the kind of restrictions that COVID has placed on us. So being able to reach out and help Conan and being able to make connections with the farm staff has just really been a spark, a nice energy, a great focus for students. Next slide, please. I wanted to highlight some points of pride. Social emotional learning is key at Bowers. It's embedded into each course, beginning with a daily check out, a check in and continuing on for the duration of the school day. We have amazing staff. We have amazing students and they form really, really strong connections. I would say that community, the community feel within the the actual Bowers community, but then also branching out into the farm and into the district is just a really strong point of pride. Our staff members are focused on rooting the curriculum and instruction and experiential and hands-on learning opportunities to support holistic development. Everything that we do, from walking in the door each morning until we walk out at night, everything, every interaction is a really positive learning opportunity. The staff and teachers, support staff have really intentional, you know, decisions and intentional behaviors that focus learning and instruction into everything that occurs from breakfast to math class. There's there's always learning happening. The coursework guides students to apply current learning to their future endeavors. We're really focusing on talking with students about their futures, whether it be college or career readiness. Those conversations are continuing to occur. And one of our points of pride, as some of the other members of our team have already addressed, LST and the board and members of the district, other staff members, teachers, our staff at the farm, everybody has just been amazing in supporting student learning and supporting each other throughout this entire process. Our teachers are action researchers and they're continually reflecting on their practice. They're reflectively and constructively analyzing best practice to build connections, to increase student engagement. This work is continual and it's really, really powerful. One of the unique things about Bowers is that, of course, we are on a farm. So we continue to emphasize the exploration of farm, the exploration of community and the exploration of self. We have a really, really strong connection to place. And while our points of pride and our our data digs have been focusing on celebrating teachers, I think one thing that's really, really important is to highlight our students because of course we would not be here without our kids. And our students are readers, our students are writers, our students are mathematicians. They're investigators, they're problem solvers, they're creators, they're learners, they're teachers. Our students are amazing. And so I think that it's really awesome that we get to come here tonight to highlight and celebrate our students' strengths. But another point of pride at Bowers is that we try to do this on a regular basis. Just really lift up our students, lift up our staff and highlight and celebrate all of the strengths that we all bring to the table. So thank you for having me and I look forward to another update. I think the next next up is Charlie and Kathy.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Kathy McDonald and I are happy to be here to give you a mid-year progress report and to share data. Also share with you support and interventions that we're currently working on and to offer some reflections on our points of pride so far this year. We are off, as was mentioned earlier, day three of spring testing. So we're very glad to get back to talking about instruction. So for trustee Baron and others, we have some specific data to share. But please remember, this is only one piece of the story, but we wanted to share nevertheless. And so the data that I'm going, we're going to share with you right now is the pass fail data. Because remember, when we talk about the academic journey thus far, we're really talking about almost a year from now. Back in 1920 school year. And so one of the things we wanted to share with you is is the pass fail data from not only second semester of last year, but first semester of this year. And these data points, among many others, are driving our work that we now have going forward to support our students and quite frankly, our staff too and families. So Beth, if you could forward to the the first slide. So let's go back to last semester. I want to just give you a cursory look at some of this data right now. And we'd be happy to come back in more detail and break this data down even further. But one of the things that we looked at last spring, as many districts did across the state and the country, is that we knew our students were in a difficult predicament, having to go remote literally on on a dime. And so how do we help students and families gain credit through this COVID pandemic early on? And so as many of you are aware, we developed COVID credit. And it was a was part of our continuous learning plan 2.0. And it was an opportunity to help students and not impact their GPA. And the number of courses that students opted to take COVID credit is 900. But think of that, not just that's not each individual course. Those are courses and then the sections within each course. And more importantly, that second bullet point, the number of students that students opted to take the COVID credit in one or more classes is 626. That is significant when you're talking a little over the third of our high school population. And then the number of courses that students either earned a failing grade or no credit in. Remember, this is not students, this is courses is is 505. And so that is the the work that we embarked on as soon as the semester ended last spring and into the summer, working with our counselors and our families and students to help support any of those students that needed that help. And Beth, if you could go then to the next slide. So then we talk about what is what has occurred from the first semester of this school year. And we, while we didn't offer COVID credit, what we did say, because students were now back either in a hybrid or full time or virtually remote, whatever the situation, that we needed to do something to support them the first semester of this school year. And typically, the pass fail option is only available the first couple of weeks of the semester. But we decided that was the best interest of students to extend that throughout the semester. And so that was an option that in terms of you see the breakdown, and we broke it down in the four core areas specifically. So you can see again, this is not the number of students, this is the number of courses or sections. And give you an idea of where some of those pass fail options were being taken by by students. And the other thing that's important to note, what's not listed on here are the elective classes. Because remember, in COVID, students and families had to prioritize what was most important and especially with our seniors, making sure that we could support them for successful graduation. So the number of students you can see here in the second bullet point who opted to take a pass fail in one or more courses was 182. We had 473 courses or sections which students earned a failing grade or no credit, which will lead into Kathy's conversation in a section sec in a second about support and interventions. And then the number of courses where we earned a pass. Now that's a large number, but understand that we have courses like interdisciplinary hour and directed studies, which is a pass fail course to begin with. We are glad that we provided these options for students because we needed to provide flexibility and alternatives. And quite honestly, it saved, especially looking back at last semester, it saved many of our seniors. And obviously for underclassmen, kept them on track for graduation. I'm very thankful that we had the eight period day because that gave us some other flexibility and help knowing that we could either prioritize some of those those courses for students. And I really have to give a big shout out to our counselors. I think many of you know the important role the high school counselors play. They were pivotal in helping guide students and families through this. This was not easy to navigate, but this is one set of data we wanted to share with you. And now I'm going to turn it over to Kathy, who's going to segue into what support and interventions do we have for students going forward?
Thanks, Charlie. In noticing the number of students and the number of course sections that students either opted to take a pass fail or were struggling to complete those courses and show proficiency, especially in the COVID time. We we want to beef up our our summer course options as interventions for students so that they can stay on track to graduate as well as stay on track in their curriculum progression as we go from course to course. And so as always, in the summer, we always have our E2020 edutuity and a Michigan virtual, which are both third party vendors. And within Bloomfield Hills this year, we are looking to offer many, many virtual classes for students that will be a mix of asynchronous, asynchronous schools as students could take these for credit recovery, a course that maybe they did not show mastery in that they took already and or grade improvement, for instance, a student that maybe took a pass fail during the semester, maybe even earned a pass, but would like to demonstrate a stronger understanding of those course concepts and retake that course and beef up their skills as they move on in their progression. As well as students who may be taking a course for either credit advancement or an elective course for what we're calling summer credit. So it is a much shorter semester, obviously, in the summer, we'll have two four week sessions where students can sign up for these courses, but we taught by VH teachers. These courses are developed by VH teachers. And we're very excited with the House Bill 4048 as well as PA three to offer a lot of our summer, especially our quarter, our credit recovery courses for free to VHS students, which we anticipate will help a lot of students in making that decision and families over the summer. Going to offer maximum flexibility as well. And our counselors are working really hard as we identify the students that may be in need of this as well as students who show interest and leveraging so that they maximize the opportunities over the summer to stay on course and make up credits as well as in our summer program.
Thank you, Kathy. And then finally, let us close with some points of pride as we reflect back on the school year thus far. I think one of the things that we look back on that we were able to do is to adjust our bell schedule. And we had to be innovative and creative with that. And the development of Black Hawk Hour. Not a day goes by that a student doesn't ask me, Mr. Hollerth, are we going to keep Black Hawk Hour next year? And while this year is kind of an anomaly of sorts, I said, we're committed to making sure those supports and that quality time with staff is somehow built into our schedule. People have asked, how many times have you changed the schedule? I haven't changed the schedule with our staff this many times over the course of 15 years. I think we've changed it four already this year. And I'm proud with and students and staff played a large part in the development of those schedules in terms of meeting the needs to help help build students in the work going forward. Also proud about the SEL work, the check in Wednesdays. And also now that we're using the Sabers data, as was mentioned earlier. This year too, I want to mention, it was the inaugural year for our peer-to-peer links program. That is general ed students working with our special education students. As you know, I know many board members know, we're taking on the math equity challenge. We know the importance of that work and partnering with our middle schools in that. We're excited. We also, we also knew that the traditional final exam model was not going to work for students and families, given the pandemic. And so we developed the final experience process that could only help students in their achievement, given the pandemic obstacles. Also, credit to David and Jessica that have worked with LST on the scheduling process using Qualtrics that will hope give us more accuracy and better process for scheduling. You know that we launched Biomed and Media Arts Professional Pathways this year, which joins Agriculture, Food and Natural Resource Science. So now we have three pathways up and running. And despite COVID, Biomed and Media Arts are doing an outstanding job. The other thing is we got all our faculty onto one learning management system. That was my promise, two and a half, three years ago to families is to bring our teachers on to one platform. And so we're we've, this year, we spent a great amount of time with training with Canvas. And so it's been a great tool this far and we're only going to get better at using it as as time goes on. And then we spent a large portion of our time, our professional learning around the high hybrid learning. And I will tell you, our faculty have had a very, very tough job trying to teach students online and in person at the same time. So all our professional learning, much of it was based around those effective and best practices in order to increase student engagement. And finally, we're very excited as we're launching our virtual learning community LC for 2122 because we, even before the pandemic, Pat and I and and my team talked about having a virtual presence. The timing is obviously appropriate, but this is something we're very excited about to be offered to offer this virtual option going into next year. So despite the challenges, I'm extremely proud of our students. I'm extremely proud of our staff and sincerely appreciate the support of our our high school families to get us through all of this. And so with that, I'll either turn it back to Carrie or to Paul.
Thanks. Thanks, Charlie. Jennifer, you had a question?
Hi. Thank you very much, Charlie and Kathy. My my question is, you said that 505 courses were failed or no credit in the spring of 2020. And I'm just wondering, has there been an opportunity yet? Probably last summer would have been a time, but but maybe not because of COVID. For any of those credits to have been recovered already? Or will that work be focused on this summer?
So
Go ahead, Kathy.
I just say that that's a combination of efforts. There was certainly some last summer. There's been a lot during this school year, our counselors, as well as, you know, for our students, our IEPs, our DS staff and our our teachers have identifying those students and allowing students to not just have credit recovery, but also some curriculum recovery. And an opportunity to recover those credits then as they move through the school year, as well as leveraging hopefully this summer as well. So yes, there's been some and more to come.
Okay, Howard, Dan Lisa?
A similar question I asked of Rebecca to Aileen and to Charlie. What are your plans, if any, for graduation ceremonies this year?
Glad you asked. We are going to go to DTE for graduation. So based on our conversations with DTE, we're looking forward to hosting graduation, obviously with COVID protocols in place at DTE.
And Howard, we are planning to host our graduation celebration on June 4th outside at the farm.
So Aileen, if you can just make sure that you loop us in, obviously, we'll be going to the high school graduation, but I want to make sure that we are informed about what's going on at Bowers.
Yes, we would love to have you. Thank you.
Lisa?
Again, I have to just convey my deepest gratitude.
Again, I have to just convey my deepest gratitude as a parent of two high school students, one graduating. This entire year has been student-centered support and compassion like I've never seen. I talk to people from other districts. I, I mean, it is in every single decision that's made, it is with students in mind and it's seen from the student perspective, from talking to students, from having my own, when everything comes together and you see policy and it, when it mirrors in real life, like it shows up on screens and when it shows up at board meetings, it is 100% authentic. And I, finishing with points of pride, I can attest to every single one of those, from making students feel comfortable about being able to postpone taking tests, telling them not to worry about college. But I mean, you know, it's talking the talk, walking the walk, and it's been so, to the extent that our students are thriving and functioning and going to be, and I know that they will, going to be able to get through this okay, it is because of the, you know, extra efforts of the staff in the high school. I just, on a personal level, know from everything, from parents, teacher conferences, it is echoed again and again and again, the student-centered compassion exercised by administrations and the staff. And I cannot thank you and the teachers enough for that, really from the bottom of my heart as a parent and as a board member. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Lisa. I have a question, not for the high school, and I see Todd walking in the background. Maybe it's for Todd or any member of L S T. So we talk about summer programs for the high school virtual. Are there going to be any programs for K through eight for parents of students that think they, they would like to retake or take additional courses over the summer as well?
I think we're talking about that next.
Oh, we're talking about?
Yeah.
Yes. We definitely have that.
It's been a long, it's been a long presentation. I didn't realize we still have more left.
Yes. Can I, can I just say one thing? I really, listening to all this, I just want to dial back time and go to the school district myself, because just thinking about how when, when we came up, there was really no awareness whatsoever of the social, the importance of the social and emotional learning component. It used to be considered peripheral. We know now very, very well how integral it is. You, you can't, Dr. Amden came and spoke to us a few years ago and said, you know, if you walk into school holding a bunch of baggage, you literally can't receive the math or the Spanish. And I'm just really grateful to be in a district that has, like Lisa said, walked the walk in this department, to hear the elementary principals talk about, the students talking about their feelings. When Fred Rogers testified at Congress in 1970, because they were thinking of tanking PBS as a TV station, that is how he got the grant, is he said, I do believe that if children can learn to talk about their feelings, then we would have less violence in this society. And then the congressman in charge said, you've got your $20 million, you know, good luck at PBS. And that, this whole conversation just reminded me of that.
Thanks Jennifer. Any other comments? I don't see your questions. Okay, so back to Superintendent Watson or to Carrie or Todd?
Could we have a, could we have a couple of minutes?
I was going to do that after the, after this presentation.
Okay, that's fine.
Yeah, this is the last slide. I have the pleasure of closing out this entire section. And I just want to thank all of the principals, assistant principals, teachers, families for everything that's been going on behind the scenes. I'm so happy that everyone had the opportunity to share tonight about how they're moving students along during this year and how they are making data-driven decisions and they are focused on those continuous improvement cycles and how they're trying to engage families in that process. And the care that they're taking for students and that there is a huge focus on social, emotional learning. So it really is a team effort of everyone while also navigating, navigating all these COVID guidelines and all the changes taking place this year. And lastly, I just want to give a big kudos while I'm here as well, because we know that the principals, the assistant principals, the testing coordinators, the counselors, all while this is going on, they're also scheduling testing. And we know that we had P S A T, S A T, and our upper level M step assessments this week, and we're moving into more so that we can really gather study due around our school improvement cycles. And I just want to say kudos to everybody. We really do have a lot to celebrate with our educators while we continue to look for ways to improve, and we really have a lot to celebrate. And so I'm so appreciative of everyone's presentations and getting that opportunity to present to you, the board. So that wraps up this section of the evening.
Yes, we'll move on to summer programming.
Summer program. Yeah, then we'll take a break.
All right, great. Summer programming? Thank you.
It's really exciting also to be presenting summer programming, just off the heels of listening to what's happening at the building level on a daily basis as we navigate different formats of instruction and in-person or virtual or hybrid. So the approach we really took here is a little similar to last year in terms of what we really want to do is primarily around two functions for summer programming. One is to extend the school year to be able to have continuous learning as we move into the summer months. And the other one is to be able to capture back and offer opportunities for students to be able to recover and make sure that there's an opportunity, particularly at the high school level, to be able to improve a grade or recover any type of credit that a student may need as a result of the experience. So also what had happened too, is we ended up getting wonderful feedback about the virtual aspects of the summer programming last year, and that helped play a role into the design of what this year was going to look like in terms of how we were going to unroll some of that virtual programming. It was extraordinarily helpful. We looked at different vendors. And at the end of the day, what we did is we decided to put together programming taught by our teachers with our curriculum, and that's what our summer is going to look like as well. And to help me talk about this is Kimberly and Sarah. They're going to help us walk through the elementary and secondary components in terms of what those options look like.
Okay Todd?
So we're going to start on the left with kindergarten through second grade. And much like Mr. Hollerith began to introduce, our summer programming is in response to the school year, but also in response to some of the feedback we received about last summer's programming. And so our kindergarten through second grade students, as well as three through five and six through eight, you see a common band there at the top, are invited to join us at the B H S Summer Academy. This will take place in person for eight weeks of time between the hours of nine and 11:30. And during that time, students will be grouped in ways that will highlight some of the targeted work you heard about from the building updates earlier this evening. Students might experience things like small group instruction, book clubs, book chats, conversation with one another about their strategic thinking, using math manipulatives, building their confidence, not only with their current grade level skills, but also with enriched social experiences, right? We know that's been something missing for our students while not in person together at school this year. And so, for the full year, I should say.
And so the time together in these grade-specific groupings during the nine to 11:30 window there will be specifically targeted, targeted around reading, writing, and mathematics. But we know that we've got access to lots of engaging concepts in the sciences and in the social sciences with our nonfiction reading, might be planting some things, for example. And we'll be looking to make that both fun and engaging while we extend the school year through those, those periods. Virtual options are also in play, again banded as we did last summer in a Stay Sharp session that will run for four weeks of time. And in the K two and three, five bands, that will combine literacy and math together, much like we did last summer. We heard some very specific feedback that additional time in literacy and mathematics was of interest to our families in grades six, seven, and eight. And so a math-specific and literacy-specific segment for our middle schoolers will also be available virtually this summer. These programs will run through the middle of the week, Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday. And like I said, will run for four weeks of time. In addition, we'll be doing some by invitation, targeted learning with our children this summer. We'll be having some literacy intervention for students that are exiting kindergarten, entering first or entering second grade. And families would expect to hear directly from the literacy specialists within those buildings for additional information around that particular offering. And our students who are developing English language would also have some invitations to engage, both in the B H S Summer Academy, as well as in some virtual supports across the four-week window of time that we'll be offering virtual learning. You see on the far right, we are looking during that in-person academy to provide any appropriate supports that might be needed for students who receive any services related to an I E P or to English language development. I'll have a social worker onsite, and all of that would be embedded, much like School Day. And so we look forward to putting those groups together based on registration and looking to really target individual student needs the best we can during that time that students are coming in to work with us this summer. And I know that Ms. Fairman has some additional secondary information to jump into in the next slide, but this may be the place where you've got some questions. So I defer to you if you'd like to keep those separate or?
We could ask, we could ask questions.
Sure, sure.
I mean, I have a question. Is this, this is, is there a cost or this is free or this is just for B H S students? How is it, how is our summer academy working?
Thank you, President Cullen. Important point. So our B H S Summer Academy is actually able to run as a result of funding from 23B PA3, and it will not incur any cost for families. It will be limited to in-district residents only for that reasoning. And the virtual options will have a slight cost, although we certainly look to remove any barriers that may be needed for students who would like to access those programs and may have, find that tuition to be an inhibitor. Please don't hesitate to reach out directly to either building principal or to our registration office, once that is uploaded into Community Pass. And those offerings would be available for residents outside of Bloomfield Hills District, should the, should the interest be there. And once we are able to get those courses fully staffed, we would of course want to prioritize the registration of our students in our community first.
Someone pays tuition incomes, do they qualify as a resident, as a B H S student, even though they're living outside of Bloomfield Hills?
Virtually yes, if I'm following your question correctly.
If someone was a tuition student?
Oh, oh, yes. They would be, they are a Bloomfield Hills student. Yes. Yes. If they are registered within our Student Information Service, they are a Bloomfield Hills student. Thank you. It's an important clarification. And then of course, anything that families attend by invitation with a particularly, with a particular targeted learning outcome is also free of cost.
Any, I can't see, I don't see any questions in the chat, Jonathan?
Is this available to all students or did I catch who? Yes.
Yes, the majority of the offerings are available to all students. You'll see the things by invitation only would mean that you would hear from a specialist within the school building to indicate that those particular services will be targeted to an academic need. For example, our reading recovery staff may be doing some very targeted small group work with children by invitation. But what you see in the Summer Academy, as well as in the virtual Stay Sharp, we've titled it, are open to all of our students that are interested in engaging in that way this summer.
Anything in the chat? Cool, Jennifer. Thank you very much.
Absolutely. Thank you. I appreciate the questions. We're mostly targeting not only any skill development, but confidence, right? Students enjoy learning. They enjoy our classrooms, as you've heard tonight from the building presentations. And we know that when students re-enter that fall feeling confident, that that just grows, right? Their excitement about learning and classroom time. So thank you very much, Ms. Fairman.
I'm sorry, I have one quick question. The in-person academy is, this may depend on your enrollment numbers, but do you foresee like a grade three to five classroom? Is it pumped like that? Or will that just depend on how many students there were?
It will very much depend on enrollment, but our goal will be to group those students by grade level, group the closest that we can. So if they were, if, yes. So in short, yes, if we have, we're looking to have students in groups of 15 to 20, I believe, if I recall our conversations correctly. So we'll, we'll try to hit as close as that as we can, certainly for a little bit under. You know, we will adjust accordingly. But knowing that students are going to be moving about, of course, in COVID-safe ways, the idea is not a sit and get day, right? So students will be interacting across groups as, as is both age and grade appropriate, just like they do in their school buildings right now through the school year. So hopefully there'll be a lot of flexibility there, and we're really looking forward to not only being able to engage with our children this summer, but also to hear some of the creative ways that our staff are going to build out that time.
Good evening. Just for those who are watching at home, I'm Sarah Fairman. I'm the Director of Secondary Education. I changed my hair color, so nobody knows who I am anymore. That's just kind of how it goes. So I'm here to talk about the high school summer programming.
I thought you were Jennifer Perone when I first came.
That is a huge compliment. Thank you very much. I appreciate that. If I could be Jennifer Perone, oh, thank you. So I, basically a year of Zoom, I was tired of looking at myself, so I wanted to look at somebody different. We are offering four different types of learning for our high school students this summer, as both Charlie and Kathy were alluding to. Because of COVID, we gave them different options in terms of allowing them to be successful at school. So our first option is something we're really excited about. It is new to us this year, but it's been the works for about a year and a half, two years in terms of developing these virtual courses. Obviously, the pandemic really brought that on much faster. I believe last January of 2020, we had a conversation about offering virtual courses. And what do you know, within two months, we were already doing it. So the first one is the virtual courses taught by Bloomfield Hills High School teachers. These are online. They are module-based, so they're going through the Canvas system. There is no time requirement in terms of like you have to be somewhere at 7:00 AM every day. You will have five interactions with the teacher that are live, that you set up by appointment. So those are small group, full group, or individual, depending on what is needed. But you will have some live interaction with your teacher, but it isn't as though you, you can set that up as an appointment versus, you know, you have to be there Tuesday at 9:00 AM. Those options include credit recovery for those students who did not pass a course and therefore did not receive credit for them. That is a graduation requirement, and so this allows them to continue on in their graduation path. There's grade improvement. So let's say there was a student who took a class, passed, failed. They passed the class, but they were realizing that maybe when they apply for college, it might look better if they have a grade on their transcript. This gives them the opportunity to do that. Or let's say they got a D and they would really rather have a higher grade than that, they can engage in this course and then have that grade improvement grade noted. Or summer credit. Summer credit means it is a course that you did not take before. These are no different than the summer credit courses we've offered before, which students often take so that they can free up their schedule for more electives in the year ahead. That includes health, P E, economics, living in a digital world, government, and forensic science. Those courses are all semester-long courses, which is why you're able to do that over the summer. And then on the catalog of lists, the other requirement for those virtual courses taught at B H S for either credit recovery or grade improvement, you have to have taken that class with us at Bloomfield Hills High School. Because basically you are going to go back and re-engage in that curriculum a second time to really make sure you hone your skills and have that knowledge. If you haven't had the class before, there is no way a four-week class makes up for a semester class in terms of actual credit. So virtual courses that are available through E2020, those are credit recovery. That is a very common thing we've had before in the past. That is an extensive catalog. The issue is there's no way we can reteach every single one of the courses taught at Bloomfield Hills High School in the summer. And so if a course is not offered by us with our teachers, you can also go find credit for that on the E2020 site. Those usually take about five weeks, six weeks to complete, and we are looking for July 30th completion for those, that we can make sure we a July 30th completion for those, that we can make sure we are able to counsel the students as needed, depending upon the outcome of their E2020 course. As always, we also have virtual courses that are available through Michigan Virtual. These are full semester courses with the full content, and therefore it is a credit recovery, grade improvement, and/or a grade replacement. So if you took Biology 9, and you did not get a grade that you wanted, and you really want to replace the grade, not to show grade improvement, you can take the Michigan Virtual class and replace that grade altogether, eliminating your previous grade on your transcript. And last is something we're so excited about, as Aileen was talking earlier, Dr. Meyer, about the uniqueness that is the Bowers Farm. We are offering a summer immersion experience there, which is an emphasis on innovation, communication, and social-emotional learning. That is the only course of our five course, or four selections, that's actually in-person. It is two days a week for three hours on the farm, where you get to engage with your classmates, but more importantly, with all of the amazing animals and other opportunities that the farm provides. And what a wonderful way to spend your summer. So all of this registration, I believe, is being put into Community Pass today and should be out early at some point next week. So we just have to check through it on Monday to make sure it's accurate, so that people can register for these courses. And then we are excited for our summer and to get ready to have our kids back in the fall. I meant to say that with all of this, we also will have our lab open at the high school every day from 9:00 to 12:30, with staffed by math teachers, lit, lit teachers, and special education teachers to help support students through the online curriculum. If they are unable to get online at home and do the courses, they're welcome, come to the high school and do it there. If they need some additional support, there's a place that they can go to for free with teachers that are, with our teachers, actually, that are staffing that lab, essentially, to help support all of our kids. So I will take questions. Yep.
How far back can a student go for a grade replacement, grade recovery?
Last year and this year.
Last year, even first semester?
Correct.
Okay, and this year, okay.
Yep. Jennifer?
Yeah, question about the purple bucket, our, our own classes, the, the list at the end, is that list...
That's only the summer credit list. We have, basically, it's Bio, everything else, it has two semesters to it. So it's Biology, Algebra, Geometry, US History, World History, American Lit, and World Lit. So basically, those core classes of ninth and 10th grade are all on that list.
For summer, summer credit, no?
For grade improvement or credit recovery, yep.
Questions? Thank you very much.
Thanks.
With that, I think there's nothing else.
Correct.
We're done? All right, we're going to take a five-minute, minute bathroom break, we'll come back at 8:51.
No.
Just telling you FYI.
Hey, we're going, for our audience, now we're going to be talking about school start times. Superintendent Watson?
Thank you, if we could, Beth, if you don't mind pulling up the slide deck, please? So part four, school start times. So let's kind of begin with the why, why we're even considering new start times, and, you know, why we're having this conversation. This is research about start times that's been almost 20 years, so there's nothing new about looking at start times. So most US middle and high schools start the school day too early. So five out of six US middle and high schools starts the school day before 8:30 AM. The American Academy of Pediatrics has recommended that middle and high schools should aim to start no earlier than 8:30 AM to enable students to get adequate sleep. Teens, on average, need at least eight hours of sleep per night. Younger students, on average, need at least nine hours of sleep per night. So two out of three US high school students sleep less than eight hours on school nights. Adolescents, and by adolescents, according to the World Health Organization, adolescents are those that are 10 and older, and the American Academy of Pediatrics classifies adolescents as those that are 11 and older. So adolescents who do not get enough sleep are more likely to be overweight, not get enough physical activity, suffer from depressive symptoms, engage in unhealthy risk behaviors such as drinking alcohol, smoking tobacco, and using illicit drugs, and perform poorly in school. There's also more information on the CDC and AAP website. Next slide, please. So Bloomfield four, the strategic plan, looking at 2019 to 2023. Goal area number one, Bloomfield Hills Schools will provide an educational experience where all learners are empowered to reach the unique potential reflecting the BHS portrait of a learner. Objective two, time allocation, optimizing our use of time to best support the learning needs of students and staff. A special note, during the strategic planning process, the committee that drafted and outlined objective two did so with secondary start times in mind, particularly expressing interest in delaying the beginning of the school day for high school students. Next slide, please. Community Task Force, BHS Start Times. After the strategic planning process was completed, President Paul Cullen of the Board of Education launched a community task force to help explore and investigate current research in public interest. The task force was made up of approximately 25 community members, that included high school students, parents of elementary, middle school, and high school-aged students, teachers, administrators, and medical professionals. Feedback provided, the task force expressed for the district to explore options to delay the start time at the high school level in a manner that would minimize impact at both the elementary and middle school levels. Next slide, please. Looking at this year's Board of Education and Superintendent goals. Board of Education and District Goal number seven, the superintendent will present proposed new start times for the Board of Education to select for BHS for the 2021-22 school year. Superintendent Goal number six, by May of 2021, the superintendent will present various proposed new start times for Bloomfield Schools and Bloomfield Hills Schools 2021-2022 Start Times Report, that was available April 15th of 2021. Next slide, please. So again, looking at the recommendation from the American Academy of Pediatrics, it's their policy, policy statement, school start times for adolescents. Again, how are we qualifying those that are, or classifying those that are adolescents? According to the World Health Organization, those 10 and older, and for the American Academy of Pediatrics, adolescents begin at those that are 11 and older. So the key point here, in most districts, middle and high schools should aim for a starting time of no earlier than 8:30 AM. Next slide, please. Just some of the factors, limitations, and considerations. The Michigan Department of Education hours of instruction requirement, which did not exist, or does not exist for this school year. So next school year, we're looking at roughly seven hours, or six hours and 55 minutes per day that our students will be at the high school. 2021, BHS schedule reminders. This year, our students were able to partake in a reduced schedule. I know for a lot of the students that have reached out to me, that enjoy Black Hawk Hour, not just for the support, but some of the other opportunities it provides. Keep in mind, part of that was because we did not have to meet the requirement of having the six hours and 55 minutes per day. Transportation ridership and the routes to meet the demands, implication for programs such as our students that are deaf and hard of hearing, which pulls students from across the county. Sunrise-sunset times to determine the darkness of morning community stops, traffic considerations at Bloomfield Hills High School, current peer-reviewed research on school start time impact, current staff, family, and student input, current pre- and post-school opportunities such as extra classes, school sanctioned events and teams, and athletic league memberships, review of start and end times for area high schools, challenges of the different length of day between elementary, middle, and high school buildings, and potential solution. And Mr. Hollerith mentioned this earlier, Bloomfield Hills High School virtual course pilot program for next year. Next slide, please. So I'm going to go through several different options, and list just some of the pros and cons as a starting point. So currently, what we have is high school at 7:25, excuse me, middle school at 8:15, elementary at 9:05. Pros, current system known by the community allows all middle school and high school athletics and competitive club members to attend competitions with minimal disruption to the school day. Older students are at the bus stop during the winter months when it's the darkest. High school can get the Bowers, IA, OTAC before the start of those classes. With offering some optional virtual courses for first and second block at BHHS, students could begin in-person instruction at 9:05. A special note, families will be responsible for getting students to school at a later time. Cons, early start for adolescents, elementary students start later in the morning, which could cause fatigue later in the day. Next slide, please. What does it look like a 10-minute shift? High school will start at 7:35, middle school 8:15, elementary at 9:05. Pros, minimal alteration to the schedule, and high school gains 10 extra minutes. See the pros list previously for the current schedule. Some offering optional, with, with offering some virtual courses, first and second block we've talked about. And 10-minute later start for DHH students coming from other Oakland County school districts, it's not a major shift for them, as far as getting up a little, or starting a little bit later. Cons, early start for adolescents, yet again, elementary students and the potential for fatigue later in the day. Next slide. This slide looks at starting the high school at 7:55, middle school at 8:30, elementary at 9:10. Pros, preferred option for Bloomfield Hills High School students, high school and middle school start later than the previous schedule, with only 20 minutes difference at the end of the day, minimal impact to high school after-school activities. Does allow for more time in the AM for middle school and high school clubs to meet. Again, looking at the virtual options for even a later start at the high school for that possibility. Cons, specific to middle school, there may be an impact on athletes and competitive clubs leaving early to get to competitions. Elementary students start later in the morning, go later, which may cause fatigue. In the summer, it will be getting dark at the dismissal bus, dismissal bus stop, or drop off the latest out for their elementary students. And then later drop off at home for DHH students in middle school and elementary, because again, they're coming from throughout the county. Another pro that I'd like to mention is that it would meet the American Academy of Pediatrics guideline for middle school for adolescents at 8:30. A con, it would not meet the American Academy of Pediatrics at the high school level. So it meets one of the two levels as part of the recommendations. Next slide, please. Option, high school starts at 8:30 in the morning, middle school starts at 9:10 in the morning, elementary starts at 7:40 in the morning. Pros, it meets the American Academy of Pediatrics and CDC recommendations for high school and middle school. Elementary students are in school earlier in the day, opportunities for morning clubs and activities and sports at middle school and high school. Again, potentially, some students have an option to take the online or virtual class, so their day wouldn't start until 10:05 at the high school. Cons, high school, middle school athletics, and competitive clubs will need to be dismissed early to get to competitions. Elementary students will be at the bus stop in partial to complete darkness from October through April. Very early and long morning rides for our elementary students that are in our Deaf and Hard of Hearing program. Elementary students that need to be in Lasky will be in the program for two and a half to three and a half hours in general, assuming a five or six o'clock pickup. Then less availability of high school and middle school athletic facilities to the public or later at night due to the later start of school athletic practices. Next slide, please. This has the high school starting at 8:30 AM, middle school 7:40 AM, elementary at 9:10. Pros, it meets the American Academy of Pediatrics and CDC recommendations for the high school. Opportunities for morning clubs and activities and sports at the high school, offering some virtual classes, so for some students, the day may not begin until 10:05. Cons, it does not meet the American Academy of Pediatrics and Center for Disease Control recommendations for middle school. Again, they recommend that middle school and high school should start at 8:30 or later. High school athletics and competitive clubs will need to be dismissed early to get to competitions. Middle school students will be at the bus stop in partial to complete darkness from October through April. Long, early and long rides for our middle school DHH students. Middle school students that need to be in Lasky will be in that program again, two and a half to three and a half hours, assuming a five or six o'clock pickup. Less availability of the high school athletic facilities in public or later at night due to the later start of school athletic practices. Elementary students start later in the morning, go later in the day, which could lead to fatigue. In the summer, it will be getting dark dismissal, as far as our bus drop-offs for our elementary students that get off the latest. Next slide, please. President Cullen, I'll turn it over to you for discussion.
Okay, of the order, colleagues, we'll start off with...
Lisa, questions, comments?
Comments?
Paul, I'm having a really hard time hearing you, did you call on me?
Yeah, I'm sorry, um, yeah, we're going to go in order, we're going to go in order of the, what I said to our colleagues, so Lisa, you're up first.
Okay. Okay. All right, so first question, why are we only looking at these four start times, and why isn't an ear, sorry, an earlier start time for elementary being explored as an option?
That was, if we pull the slides back up?
I think that was one of them, right?
It is, with elementary starting at 7:40 AM, if we can pull up that, the blue slide, There we go.
Oh, all right.
The option has the high school start at 8:30, the middle school at 8:01, and elementary at 7:40, and then for the pros, it does meet the American Academy of Pediatric and CDC recommendations for high school and middle school.
Okay, so I, I guess I was working off of a survey that we did, but I think we've abandoned u- using that survey, because it did not ask for any feedback from our community on an earlier elementary start time. So that was going to be my next question, why, why aren't we surveying for an opinion on that if we're gathering opinions? So that's no longer an issue. My, my question, and my next question really is, I'm assuming we have two and we're going around, but my next question is, why would we go to the trouble of, you know, altering everyone's schedule and spending literally what has amounted to years discussing and planning it, and then not meet the CDC and American Academy of Pediatrics recommendations? Why wouldn't we do that? Well, I, I don't understand why we have any options on the table that don't at least meet those minimal criteria.
The last option does meet that criteria.
Right. But I mean, then why is that not the only option?
Well, it was part of the study session, and as part of my goals, it was to bring forth various configurations for the board for discussion, and then eventually moving to a vote.
Yeah, and I applaud that, I mean, obviously, we want to have lots of different options, but I think, you know, within the parameter of having different options, there has to be a bottom line. And for me, it's, you know, why do it at all if we're not going to follow the guidelines of the CDC and American, and every single scientific study we've read, every single one? Why wouldn't we follow them? I don't understand, I, I don't mind there being more than one option, there can be 100 options, but those two criteria, I thought that's why we were doing it.
That was a question or a statement?
Yeah, well, I mean, why, I guess that my question is, why, if we have three or four options, which I think is good, I want that, why don't we start with the bottom line being, we're going to meet the CDC, whatever the acronyms of every single scientific study over the last two years we've studied? Why would we start with anything other than those? And then from there, go on and explore things like transportation and athletics and different configurations, I'm all for that. But I, I thought what was driving all this was the health and safety of our high school and middle school, of our adolescents, defined by, by science. Obviously... Obviously, we're concerned about elementary, but they were the group that, starting from day one, when I went, walked into a task force. They don't have the same kind of sleep issues and shifting of start, of when they go to bed and when they wake up that adolescents have, according to all of the science. So I really thought that that was what was driving the change in start time. I thought it was a safety thing, a health and safety thing, but maybe I'm wrong.
I was gonna, I don't know if Jennifer's talking, Jennifer, I don't know if Jennifer's speaking, but I hear what you're saying, Lisa, but I think that when you list all the things that you actually just stated, I think it's best for us to be able to have an informed decision. So I appreciate being able to see what we can't do. So I think a process of elimination is important for us to be able to do, so we can't come back and say, did you think about these options? So although that might not be the best solution for us, we can't go back and say, well, did you think about this, this, and this, because everything has been presented to us today to be able to make a more informed decision. So I think that, that's what the material is. So I hear.
And I do appreciate that. And I, you know, and I understand for some board members, you know, we're coming at different places. Some of us have lived with this for years, you know, the same issue, so we're all at different places. But to me, I just, you know, I like option one, two, three, I always like choices and I always like options, and I do think it's great to see the process and how we eliminate choices and how we consider things. But it's a little confusing. And I'm not, I guess I'm not, it is genuine confusion as to why there are options on a table that don't achieve the objective we stated for doing it in the first place. That's all.
Thank you, Lisa. We'll go in order unless Jennifer wanted to clarify. Michelle?
Well, I just, I would just add that, Lisa, I feel like we did start with that as a baseline, and then we introduced, you know, upwards of two dozen practical considerations for, for real life and transportation and everything else, and that's how we are at the place we are today. We have two plans that fit the bill for APA for high school students, and we have the blue plan, which fits the bill for high school and middle school.
Yeah, so to clarify, so this, this presentation was talked about at one of our committees, where three board members were a part of. So this is sort of what's come out of the committee as a presentation to the full board. Jennifer, I know your chair is that kind of.
So, so yeah, we, we went through the same information at BIC on Monday, and the decision was that this was too important of an issue for us to formulate as a small group, a specific recommendation at that, at that time, and that, that it should be a whole board discussion tonight as a, the real launching point for this, this decision.
Okay. Just, just to kind of clarify where all of this is, is coming from. Michelle, do you have questions or comments? Just going in order.
Okay. Yeah, so I was gonna say, and I, I get it, Lisa, but you have to remember there's also three new people. So we want to make sure that everyone has at least a foundation of information in which to make an informed decision. So I don't have any questions because I think I asked most of my questions to Pat. It was definitely in support of the suggestion from me to have all of our options presented to the board, and so there were definitely some, some, some heavy cons, but at the same time that we had questions, or if you, did you consider this time, or did you consider that time? Because I think that was one of the questions that you had, was that you considered this time? And so now we can see what times were considered, the full discussion, no one's left out of the conversation. But I don't have any questions. That was my, just my statement of clarification. I think it's great for us as three new board members. John and I had a chance to see the information, but Siva has only seen, you know, what's being presented today. And so to have a full scope of it, I think is important for us and any new parents in the community or any new individuals watching this to know that we thought about every option for consideration and why options were not considered.
Okay. With that, Siva?
Still digesting all the pros and cons, Paul. It's, I can understand why all these options were considered, and, and I think it's thoughtfully put together. So no comments other than that.
Thanks, Siva. Howard?
Okay, thank you. So first off, I'd like to really compliment Sarah and the team who put together this material, this package and the documentation that has been provided to us is excellent, and this is the type of analysis that I would hope and expect we get on all studies that we do in the future. I really want to give props to the team who put this together. Thank you so, so much. I had not realized that the recommendations coming from AAP included middle school in addition to high school. We've always talked about high school, high school, high school on this, but if this incorporates middle school, that was a, a new fact for me. So obviously, that changes the, the criteria as we analyze this. Again, I've got a lot of questions, but I'll try to limit it just to two for right now. As Lisa is saying, only one of the options of the five that was presented to us, the one current and the four alternatives, meet the, the requirements that were defined from AAP. So I understand Lisa's issues of, you know, we've got four alternatives, but only one really meets the, the basic requirements that we proposed, you know, over the last year or over the last number of years. Now, that option, option four, which I'm, I'm either calling it the option four or the blue option, does have five cons. So that obviously is, is a concern that it's, you know, they're gonna squeeze the balloon in one place and it's gonna come popping out somewhere else. So it, there is no perfect solution, at least what's been proposed so far. A question, though, is we, especially now that we have this data, we've been talking about launching this in the 2021-22 school year. But as we know, this district is going through a major redo of our grade structure for the 2023-2024 school year. So two questions come from that. Number one, if we do this in the 21-22 or the 22-23 school year, our grade configurations for elementary school and middle school do not comport with what the AAP says is middle school, because middle school is six through nine, or six through eight, excuse me, and we don't have a middle school like that for the next two years. So one, I'd like to have someone discuss, when we say middle school, are we the traditional, are we using the traditional definition of middle school as defined by the country? Or are we talking about the Bloomfield Hills Middle School configuration that we've sort of morphed ourselves into over the past, you know, 40 or 50 years? So that'll be number one. And then question number two is, with these cons, well, as we move into 23-24 school year, we will only have two middle schools, not three. And we, the middle and the elementary schools will be very evenly balanced in terms of population with the redistricting. So it possibly is gonna change a lot of the cons that are popping up trying to launch from 21-22. So have we taken that into consideration that, you know, what about the thought? I mean, well, first, could we run the numbers or run the, the process here?
Howard, just what, what are your questions?
What, what I'm getting, I'm trying to get to my question, sir, which is, what happens to the analysis if we go to the 2023 school year configuration, 23-24? Do the number of cons that this analysis shows go down because we now have one middle school less and different configurations of the elementaries?
So Howard, that was, that's a great question. Those were asked and answered at BIC on Monday. The answer is nothing, because we are still gonna have elementary schools, middle schools, and high school with three routes. So the, the only practical consideration is really that fourth and fifth graders will have a change of their start and end times if they are, you know, when the configuration changes.
Okay. So that waiting till 22-20, or 23-24 doesn't remove any of the cons that this analysis is showing?
I don't know if I can say that for sure, because I'd have to go through and think about each one, but.
It's not, it's not up to you. It's really up to Sarah and the people who did the analysis to really tell us that. And so sort of coupled with that is my, my first question, which is, when, for, for the next two years, you know, middle school by AAP is not what we call middle school, does that cause any issues?
For AAP or for the schedule?
For us. Because we've got, you know, when we talk middle school, we're not talking about sixth graders, we're talking about fourth graders.
Sure. Isn't that, so in the report, we talked about levels, and levels meaning middle school is currently who attends West Hills, East Hills, or Bloomfield Hills Middle. So that could be fourth or fifth graders until we do the, we do the change.
Right.
So they are not part of, but they are 910, so they, that's partly why Mr. Watson was emphasizing the World Health Organization considers 10-year-olds adolescents, too. So it does kind of, it's a morph. I mean, that's the one, there are so many difficulties with this schedule, one of them being that we have mixed buildings. Technically, we have a middle-level building, but not a middle school building.
Correct.
The other one to keep in mind, the bigger challenge that, that we did manage to eliminate in this is that there was a 15-minute difference in the length of day between the high school and the middle school, the elementary school. So you could line up that morning schedule perfectly for the 40 minutes that we need for transportation, but in the afternoon, high school goes 15 minutes longer. And so it was really hard to figure out how to get all that together. So with the work of Charlie and his team, we were able to shave 10 minutes off of that high school schedule without impacting academics. So that was an amazing achievement by them to allow us to have the options you see before us. That was one of the challenges we had previously in our survey, is that we were not able, we had not shaved off those 10 minutes, and that is why those schedules were the, different, because we were able to save that, those 10 minutes of time, which actually is amazing how much difference it makes. Jay Mack is also on this call. She is muted at the moment, but if we have specific transportation questions, the guru of transportation is available to us if we need her.
I'm, I'm not asking specific questions. I'm asking, because I'm no expert on any of this. All I'm saying is, all I asking is, because we have a kind of a, an amalgam middle school, yeah, elementary school structure right now, and we're going to a new structure in 23-24, does that in either for the next two years or in 23-24, change any of the analysis? And it sounds like the answer is no.
No, and the thing about, is that we're gonna go from a very east-west based district to a north-south. So you're gonna have a middle school at the north and the south, and then the element, and then the high school in the middle, and then out this way. So it actually may save us a little bit of time in transportation. I'm not gonna say it's a ton. I'm gonna say maybe five minutes on a route. But that's another thing that's, the change of the three middle schools that are all spread out this way to a little bit more of a compact zone, does allow us a little bit more fun and freedom in two years' time, but not, it's not gonna be more than five minutes change.
And I'm at a 40,000-foot level, and unless you change it after this evening, change your, your thought, my, from what I'm getting is, no, no, you know, basically going from, for the next two years and then in two years hence, you know, this analysis is valid no matter what. Okay. Another question would be, with these different cons that we have, again, not being an expert on any of this, it sounds like none of them are deal breaker, it sounds like none of them are deal breakers in that if they were a deal breaker, that option would have been, you know, eliminated and you wouldn't have presented it to us. Is there any way, then, for you to weight those cons in such a way? Because I, I did a count on the cons, and it goes from the different five options, two cons, two cons, four cons, five cons, seven cons. Is there any way to put a weight on them such that we could come up with some sort of a scoring mechanism to try to figure out whether these, you know, you know, which of these options are, you know, scores the best? Similarly, you know, when we, when we interview people, we score them. When we went through the high school decision, yeah, eight or nine years ago, we had waitings on the scoring such that we could try to figure out the best alternative. Is there a way to weight these cons in some way, shape, or form?
Trustee Barrett?
It's different when you're comparing it to interviewing people for a physician. Where it's clear cut. It would be difficult to weight them because everyone's priority is different, right? If I'm an elementary parent, and you ask me to weight it, I'm gonna wait it one way. I'm not an elementary parent. I'm a high school parent. I'm gonna wait it completely differently. When my kids are in middle school, I wait it, I wait it differently. So part of what we're hopeful for today is to get some direction from the board about what additional information you need, ones you feel should just be taken out. I think the easiest way to really break it down is that if you pick a start time for any building, any level rather, whether it's elementary, middle, or high school, whatever that time is, one group needs to start 40 minutes after, one group needs to start 40 minutes before. That's the simplest way to look at it.
Okay. So.
What, Howard?
All right. Move, I'll, I'll, I'll wait till the next round. Thank you.
Jennifer?
So I don't have any questions. I feel like I know what I need to know to form an opinion, so I don't know if we're at that stage yet. I have a process question as to sort of how we got from here, but.
Yeah, I mean, I have, I was, I was at BIC, so I have a couple of questions.
Okay, yes. Why don't we just skip me then?
Then me, then John. All right. So questions for Todd and Sarah, who put together the presentation. So one I noticed in one of the, I forget which one, I don't remember what color, you said the students preferred, I think it was 755, I mean, based on what, like when you say students, based on what feedback? Was that a survey? Was?
That's Charlie, so I'm gonna bring him up.
Okay.
Yep. He was texted, I clock him.
Thank you. So we asked that question at Student Advisory Committee, of which there was about 59 students that participated, and one of the agenda topics was the pros and cons of the start times. And we asked them, do you want the current start time? Do you like 8 o'clock? Would you like 8:30? Would you like 9 o'clock? And so based on that feedback, the majority of students that were there preferred the 8 o'clock, or what would it equate to, the 7:55 start time here. We asked that same question of faculty at the high school, too, and the results mirrored each other. And then, and then, if I can, also, you know, when we, when we look at that as the start and end times, was the second question that we asked, would you like to start, start later and end later, or start earlier where we currently are and end at our current start time? And it was about 50-50, mixed results for the students, so.
So on that, a question, you just said the high school, it may be Todd or Sarah has, maybe Todd from a district-wide, so I know we got a letter from the VHEA. So what is the preference of our teachers in terms of all of these scenarios?
So I could probably add on a couple things in terms of like variables to consider. And then I know, I believe Mr. Watson has talked to union leadership as well. And my understanding right now is that they, their preference is to stay with the bell schedule as it was prior to COVID. But that if it's.
Like when we say that.
The, the current one, it was introduced in this document as the current, current model. So their preference would be to really kind of stay where we are right now, but that if we were to make a shift, that based on, based on my conversations with union leadership that 8 o'clock or before at the high school would seem like it was a balance for them. But I don't want to speak directly for Phil.
You did get a letter from Phil.
But I feel like, yeah, so I feel like he probably stated in there in terms of what his preferences are. The other thing to keep in mind is I'm not entirely sure around the reconfiguration. That is something that you would probably really want the director of facilities to look at with Jane if that's something that you'd want to consider, you know? And learning services, we're not experts on transportation. So we rely quite a bit on the transportation department to be able to feed us that information. There are a couple of things in there that I believe may have an impact or create more opportunities. So I'm not so sure that as you look at those times, you have to be thinking in terms of, you know, this is a decision for the next five, 10 years. Because you're, you're right, we are, you know, as Howard mentioned, we are going to be reconfiguring. As a consequence of reconfiguring, you'll be moving about 550 students from the middle school level back into elementary. I would imagine that would certainly impact transportation runs. I could be wrong on that. But then another consequence to that will be you'll have sixth grades at the elementary level, because you have to add in kindergarten to that. It's not five grades, it's six grades. And then you'll have the other half of the district that will be populated into three buildings, which would be two middle schools and a high school. At that time, the student populations would almost be relatively equal. So the district could always come back and reconsider how it routes students in terms of reducing the amount of routes that you run. So some districts stack, for instance, middle and high school together. Now you're only doing two runs as opposed to three runs. This is not something that I am an expert in. I have never run, well, that's not true. There was one district, it was so small, sometimes I would be called because there would be a tree in the road. And, and it was the principal's job to figure out how you're going to reroute a bus. So I have been involved in transportation, but certainly not making the routes or doing those time studies. So we probably have to give a little bit of time in order to do that out of transportation. Other than, I do believe all the homework has been done in this report, if you're looking at the next couple of years before that reconfiguration. My guess would be there might be an opportunity to look at this as making, that there might be multiple steps. So within that, there are certainly options where it appears as though it's moving in the right direction. And there might be an opportunity to find something that is balanced within those options. So did I, was that making sense for transportation or was that?
No, I mean, my question really was based on the letter we got and, you know, I guess some data Charlie gave on the students. Bingo, I forgot what color it was, you just had it up, the 750, I don't know if that was green or whatever it was, green, the green one, which I think covered.
Well, there we go.
Covered middle, middle school for the, in terms of the start. And high school is kind of in between, but high school, it's what you're saying the students want and then sort of, when I read this letter, what the union's okay with. So this green covers that. I don't know how much.
Yeah, my understanding is that the student group that was surveyed on this, which I think was about 100 or more students, that their first preference was this particular model that was around 8 o'clock at the high school. And then their second preference was to make no change. And then after that, it started to become a little bit blurry, which would happen on any survey. By the time you get to the third, fourth, fifth option, people have already made their selection on their first and second choice. So there, there certainly are viable options in front of you. It's also, I know on the onset of this project as well, that was something that we had suggested of waiting in terms of blending this with the reconfiguration. It was our understanding that we wanted to move quicker than bond construction. So this is a proposal in which you'd be able to enact. And then depending on maybe facilities taking a look at this as we move closer into a new configuration, there might be another opportunity to review it again.
And so question for you at your team. So what is your recommendation?
I don't think we have a recommendation at this point. I mean, with it being a study session, our goal is to bring everything for dialogue and see what additional information needs to be gathered and what the, what our next steps are going to be.
Well, and I can offer just one component. I'll say the same thing that I said at BIC, because it was determined at BIC that we weren't going to necessarily narrow those down too much. The one that I was most concerned about, so I, I look at it as more of like, okay, what should we not do? And then the rest on the table are options to look at. And I believe it was blue. If somebody could go to the blue, was it the last one? Okay, this one I was particularly concerned about because of the release time at the elementary, knowing, and I had been an elementary principal for quite a number of years. And I was concerned with the conflict around work schedules, the amount of time that kids might have to be in some type of childcare arrangement or latch key from 2:30 on. So I was a little bit concerned about that particular one, not necessarily for the lens of high school or middle school, but for the elementary. So that was one that, that if, if you're asking me, my recommendation would be to steer away from this one. I would guess, although we haven't surveyed elementary parents, I would, I would guess that this would be relatively unfavorable for those type of schedules.
Got it. All right. Jonathan?
I'm sorry, can I, can I just speak to what Todd just brought up before we leave it?
Yep, sure.
So when we had the 25-ish committee members, Brian Goby, who was our former director of facilities, he was very, very clear, because combining bus routes, like I, my first thought, two routes, yes, let's do it, right? He said it's a nonstarter for, for two reasons. He said, by the time it takes to go to pick up kids, go to one building, then another building, he said that some of those kids would be on the bus for more than 45 minutes. And at that point, it just becomes such bad service that it would be bad for the students and bad for the families. He also made the very interesting point that the middle school bus route is totally full. The elementary bus route and the high school bus route are only half full.
As of that, as of that time. We don't know.
Correct. So I'm, so, so, so what, what Todd just described, from what we know now, couldn't happen. However, you know, the high school is closer to BHMS and Loser than it is to East Hills and West Hills. So I do think it might be worth doing that transportation study again, just to find out. It would still fall apart if we couldn't combine high school and middle school probably. But I don't think, I think that's tense and, and we should still move forward now and change it again if we have to.
My question is for anyone.
John, you're unmute.
Has anyone read the studies of what happens when you do put the elementary at an early time? And are we willing to sacrifice our elementary school student or our high school student? That's my question. Is that what we're, is that what we're willing to do? And I guess that's why I do like, now that I'm looking at it and hearing Superintendent Watson talk about high school students, 755, 8, 10, elementary school students also benefit from time, at least from like our cursor studies of what happened. So does anyone read something different with regard to elementary school students being successful at a, at a.
Sure, there's very little information out there. So it's, I mean, there's a few studies, but nothing compared to the amount of data that says a later start for adolescents is beneficial.
So my concern is that we make this change and number of study that corrected one problem with another problem. And that when elementary is, because that's the time when your knowledge that you'll, I don't, from back, I just, I'm not sure sacrificing elementary. I don't know and I don't, anyone knows. That's, that's my problem. That's a statement. But my first, my first question was, is there research and, and how much is, how much research is there and has anyone had a chance to read it?
Paul, can we go around again?
I think, I think we're intending on, Jonathan, any other question, Jonathan?
No, it's a difficult problem because I want to do what recommends, but the CDC also doesn't make a recommendation to elementary school.
We'll go, we'll go around, around again. Lisa?
Okay, so John, to answer your question, we did in the task force, speak to a, I believe his title was sleep deprivation doctor, Jennifer can fill us in on the name. But he told, he, he sort of cut a lot of the research out for the rest of us by telling us, this is a problem that's unique to adolescents, unique to children starting puberty through certain age, that they, while elementary school students need nine hours approximately of sleep, it's much easier because of circadian rhythms, puberty, et cetera, to shift their sleep schedule to an earlier going to bedtime and an earlier waking up time than it is for older students. So the reason we don't see stuff, research from the CDC that says how elementary 10 years and younger are affected is because they're really not affected to the same extent. It's not swapping one problem for another. There just doesn't exist the problem in elementary school students. My question is, can we pull up option four, or Howard's been calling it the blue option, the one that meets both of the, we put the slide up, the one that meets both of the middle and high schools. Okay, so one of my questions.
One second, Lisa. So Jonathan raised, he just wanted to clarify something.
Just sitting here, I, in a quick Google search, you can find a, a study from early elementary school start times, stuff for un-economically advant, un-economically advantaged children, delaying middle and high school start times. This is quoted in.
Yeah, John, that's the only one. I've read it. There literally exists one study, that's it. And it's an economic, it's economically disadvantaged students. I, it was forwarded to me like 500 times because it is the only one really.
No, I'm sorry, Lisa, there are, there are more and.
What are the sources? Are they like CDC, American Academy of Pediatric Level research or are these, you know, that's, I don't think they're on the level of the CDC recommendation.
compilation, Lisa.
What?
I mean, it's a, I mean, I haven't even done a lot of research. That's why I asked if anyone else had. But this is a compilation of studies done by the University of Minnesota. And I'm not saying they're all, they all lean one way or the other. I'm just saying that there are studies that say that it's not good for elementary school students.
Okay, well, okay then. If there are, I would love to see them. I'll leave it at that. My, my question is on the list of cons. So some of these, I think Howard was on to something when he was saying, let's analyze what the cons are instead of just adding up a number of cons versus a number of pros. Pros meets American Academy Pediatrics and CDC recommendations is a huge pro. A con that we can't rent out our facilities to the public, not such a huge con to me. So I don't think we can equally weigh them. One pro, one con. They carry different consequences in my mind. Third thing I wanted to say is, and someone can explain it to me, I don't know, when, when we picked off this idea, we took it to a lot of middle school, elementary, and high school parents via PTO meetings. And the elementary school that I was assigned to, the parents in the meeting, I don't, I mean, I can't, this is an anecdotal, whatever, all said that an earlier start time would be better because they preferred one latch key in the afternoon as opposed to two, one in the morning and one in the afternoon. So even though it may be more hours in latch key at one time, it was splitting it up into two different latch keys that made the day feel longer to these parents. So it's just another perspective, putting it out there for Todd and anyone else who doesn't like the longer latch key. And then the last, the last point about the survey from high school, 59 student advisory committee students don't want the, I, I find that, I mean, I question a lot of the way we do surveys. I have for years. When I was a parent, I really questioned it and I questioned it throughout my time on the board. Every single student that I've met with, with Superintendent Watson throughout the pandemic, from various different groups, including the town hall that we just had, they want to start the later the better. There's not one, in fact, the single factor that determined for many of them, whether they attended in person or virtual, remote, was whether they could get an extra half hour of sleep and not have to shower and drive to school. And that's the truth. So I find it extremely difficult to believe that they would vote for an earlier start time. But if it's only 59 of them, and we've got, how many students in the high school, 1,600? That survey doesn't seem reliable to me.
Okay, we'll go to Michelle. Well, she, I mean.
Sorry about that. I was using my mouse and wrong mouse to unmute myself. For me, I'm listening to, you know, you know, what John was saying about looking at the elementary school and the middle and elementary school, if you look at the times at the only two options, the last two options that meet the recommendations, the two populations that lose the most are elementary and middle school students and their safety. And so I'm looking at the complete darkness timeframes. And so if, if our goal is to get as close to the CDC recommendations as possible, the 755 time that the students recommended, or the 8 o'clock time that the partial survey that was done, or whatever the case may be, the other time, options that get us to the goal. And I do believe it was Todd that made the recommendation as to like, okay, maybe once we, we move into our new spaces in our north and south middle schools, do we reassess and reevaluate and see if we can then move the times even closer because maybe bus routes will permit us to have, you know, fewer stops or whatever the case may be. And so at that time, it may be, you know, a better position for us as a district. So although the last two options meet the recommendations for CDC, our elementary and middle school students are the ones that lose the most. And for a parent that has an elementary and will have a middle school student, will have to partially, possibly, sorry, not partially, but possibly be walking in the dark or standing at the bus stop in the dark is a concern to me, as we do have to consider our district does have varying, various different populations. And some students do walk to the bus on their own. And so we, we received communication from parent, a parent spoke, I think last week about the bus being located on Woodward Avenue and that concern for that parent. And so as we're, we're thinking about, you know, you know, safety measures and I think that we want to make sure that we are considering our elementary school students and their times, as John kind of pointed out, that we're not sacrificing one population to accommodate another population.
Thanks, Michelle. Any other questions? Yvette?
Thanks, Paul. Yes, I echo John and Michelle's concern. Uh, thanks, Paul. Uh, yes, I, I echo, uh, John and Michelle's concerns. Uh, with, uh, younger students, uh, being in partially complete darkness. There could be a safety element to it as well. And, uh. I have serious concerns, at least about the blue one, especially for the blue option. Uh, and even though it meets the AAP CDC guidelines of putting elementary school students. In that time zone, uh, during the winter months. So I do have a concern about, uh, uh, student safety. Particularly at the elementary level and, and, and probably to a lesser extent for middle school students because they're a little bit older. Uh, but I do have concerns, um, with both the blue and the yellow option for that reason.
Thanks, Seva.
And, and I do want to make one point. For what it's worth, if, if the sample size was 59, it should be an adequate representative sample. Statistically speaking, as long as you have 30, you do have, um, a, a fairly significant sample.
I just want to thank you, Seva. I just wanted to address that, um, that was this. Student Advisory Committee that, uh, Mr. Hollerith, um, convenes like what, every month? Um, for, for student feedback and student voice. So that is a diverse group that is. Specifically selected across the grade levels and from different types of groups. So it's a pretty adequate sample of the students. Um, also on the survey we did send out in the fall, we had over 600 students respond to that survey that are high school students and of those 600 students that responded to that survey. They overwhelmingly selected the seven 55 start. That's in the report that you have there.
Howard?
Me?
We are, no, it's.
It's, uh, Howard, then you. Yes, Howard.
Am I up, Paul?
Yeah, you're up, you're up, Howard.
All right, very good. Um. We do not have enough information to make this decision or anywhere close to this decision tonight, and here's why. Um. Looking at this very analytically. There are two constraints that we have. One is we want to follow the AAP guidelines. That is a given. That's what we've been talking about for years now. The second constraint appears to be transportation. That there are, the 60 buses that we have can only handle. One set of grades at a time, either elementary, middle or high school. So therefore we have to space out elementary, middle and high school in sequence. And we are changing the sequencing around, uh, to, you know, with a, with a different alternatives, but. The, the common feature in every single one of the alternatives is that none of the buildings. Elementary, middle, high school open at different ti, open at the same time because for one reason, we only have so many buses. So. Considering the AAP recommendations have been around for years and years and years. We are, we have no, we, I don't think we are any different than any other district in the country. In that we have so many buses and we got elementary, middle and high school kids. So my, so the, the missing information is threefold. One. How the new configuration, you know, basically doing the, the, the analysis, which sounds like, uh, Jane Mack would need to assist on. In terms of how does the new configuration of buildings impact this whole thing? Because I'm not, I don't think, considering this has been around for so many years. For us, that 2021, 22 school year is a given. If we kick it down the road for two more years. And if the 23, 24 school year is significantly better, I'd say we wait. So number one. We need to do the more analysis on the new building configuration. Number two. Finding out what other school districts in the country. Are following the AAP guidelines with middle and high school at. Um, um, eight 30 or beyond. And if whatever those districts are, how are they handling the elementary school kids? Cause they've got the same issue in terms of, you know, either they have more buses. In which case they don't have the constraint of buses, or if they do have a constraint like we do, then the elementary school kids are going, getting up early. In the dark. How are they handling it? What is the experience they've had? Instead of us kind of giving our opinion. Let's actually get some facts from other districts in the country, not necessarily Oakland County. Michigan or the whole country. The AAP applies to the whole country. Number three. The survey that was done is not on these alternatives. So what we would need to do, once we narrow down the number of alternatives. Is to get a survey based upon the alternatives that we are considering. Because in my mind, the priorities of who, and then another piece of this at some point is going to be working with, with the union on this. But I love the union, but our reason for being here are for the kids. And if this is what AAP says is for better student achievement. We need to put the interest of the kids above the interest of the adults. So we need. A little bit more analysis on configurations. We need to do some more benchmarking of other districts around the country. We need a survey. Now, one of the things that Phil's letter did provide us. Is he said in the top section of his letter. That, you know, are there any ways to keep the current, you know, alt option one, but you know, with. Uh, Black Hawk hour or other flexibility that we could accommodate? The students who want to sleep later and, you know, have our cake and eat it too. We need to either say that yes, those have validity or say, no, Phil, that's not viable because of state law. The other eventual thing we need to find out, cause, cause, um. Mr. Lobby, uh, La Liberte said, you know, is this a negotiable issue? So we would need to get some feedback from Keith. Uh, Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent McDonald in terms of whether this is negotiable. Or not, or can the board and the administration do this on their own based upon the best interest of the kids? Not the best interest of the adults. Thank you.
Thanks. Seva, so your hands up before Jennifer.
You're on mute.
What other districts are doing? Um, I, I, I suggest we keep our focus on. States in the snow belt and, and not look at southern states because they don't have a kind of. Uh, darkness constraints that, that we would have here in Michigan. Point taken. We, we should find analogous, you know, north in the Mason Dixon line. Okay. Thank you.
I, I, I believe the, almost the entire state of Washington is, sorry, is, um, doing this now. Okay. So sorry for those of you at BIC, uh, Monday, I'm going to say pretty much exactly what I said there. The change is going to be traumatic no matter what. Okay, so we, yes, do I think we should look at what other northern districts are doing for elementary start times? Sure. But I think we are now entering the land of analysis paralysis. We, the science is very clear. Dr. Victor, who was our sleep expert, who came to three meetings, who was very articulate and brought a lot of papers with him. And he was very clear on the fact that if you do, you, there's no havesies for this and, and granted, there will be havesies. Cause if we start high school at eight 30, kids are going to come in for clubs early. That, that's just going to happen. So the way I think of this is how do we do the most good for the most students? Okay, so what Dr. Victor said is. If you come in at eight 30, two or three days a week, you lose the benefit. If you come into school at seven 55 or eight o'clock, that essentially does nothing. You lose the benefit. So based on just that, my preference would be to throw out everything except blue and yellow. Because that's where high school starts at eight 30. Okay, so the next thing I want to say. Is that I think leaving this decision up to high school students is ludicrous. Okay, if you ask the high school student, what are you going to have for dinner? And they pretty much say cocoa crispies. Okay, they, they do, I'm sorry, they're not scientists. They're lovely young people. They, they do not get to make this decision over the judgment of medical science. I am totally against that. And I'm totally against throwing out another survey for the same reason. Um, the way the conversation has shaped up, and, and I'm glad, John, that you're here because you're. A good elementary school parent representative. The, this conversation sits at the precip. Oh, I'm so sorry, Michelle. Yes, you do too. And I, I, to, to defend myself, I was going to point out what John said before, which, which you had not said before. Okay. So anyway, my concern is we cannot let this divide our community apart. Okay. The way that John expressed his sentiments, which is how many, many, many families have expressed their sentiments, particularly the elementary families. Is that this is a zero sum proposition, that high school will win, elementary will lose. And there, there is no medical reason why elementary can't go earlier. I do totally believe. That there are incredible practical reasons and Mr. Bidlock and his team with their opinion about. I, I don't prefer blue. Okay, so I'm going to get there in a second. Um, I also have zero sympathy for standing out in the dark, which I did my entire childhood. In Syracuse, New York, which is a much darker and much cloudier place than, than Michigan. I under, I'm not trying to be. You know, snarky here. Of course, it's a safety concern, but again, I, it cannot override. Doing what's best for the most families. Um, that anyone who has lived with or spent time with a high school student this year. Has probably been up close and personal witness to the profound difference. That going in later, um, has meant for their lives. So if I didn't believe it before and I did. Um, I, I saw it with my own eyes and there is no question in my mind that we have to put the high school at eight 30. What else do I want to say? Um, our sister districts heard about our discussions the other night at the IA meeting and, um, they were very supportive. Wes Bloomfield and Troy representatives, um, gave us a big shout out for moving in this direction. So. In terms of athletics and that's not part of my consideration much, you know, yet. I think we'll cross the nitty gritty of that when we get there. But my hope is, is that when we move, our sister districts may very well take it seriously themselves. Um, I support the orange plan because I think it does the most good for the most students. Totally admitting the hypocrisy that the eighth graders and some of the seventh graders will be, will not be, you know, having their APA medical guidelines followed. I get that. I just, I think it is the solution that does the most good for the most members of the community. Yeah, yeah, it's, oh, I have it on my, so. Um, yeah, I mean, that, that is, that is what I, that is my opinion. Um, it, so if we went to blue, elementary would be bumped 90 minutes earlier than they are now. If we go to orange or yellow. Middle school is bumped only 30 minutes from where they are now. So the magnitude of the disruption is less. Um, and it preserves the concern of, I need an older student home first. Okay, to take care of a younger student if, if that is the family situation. Again, this is not a customer service organization. I do not think we could, we should make any decisions based on convenience because families have a schedule now. Whatever change we make, families will adapt and they will have a schedule. Um, I can't speak to having the merits or cons of having two latch keys over one, but. You know, if it's fatiguing to be in latch key for a chunk of time, I, I think that go, maybe goes a little bit easier on our not youngest students. In other words, our middle school students. Um, so that is how I feel. I, after living in this space for two years, I am a strong proponent. Of this plan, of the orange plan.
Thank you, Jennifer. I don't have any other comments, um, or questions. They were answered. Um, Jonathan?
Say really quick, Jennifer, if your student, if you have a middle school student and an elementary school student, that would impact. The siblings being able to take care of each other. So that, uh, would be an issue with the orange plan.
I'm not following, Michelle. Can you, can you explain?
The middle school will start at seven o'clock, so that means that middle school sibling will be gone. Before the elementary school would start, so it wouldn't have the same impact. I think you were saying that the, this, they could watch their children. They could watch the kid go off. So that's not, that's not go with that plan.
You're, you're right. I was, I was considering the afternoon. Um, I was not considering the morning for that.
Jonathan, anything?
No, I mean, I have, I have, right, so anecdotally, I have a third grader. Uh, his bus comes at eight 49. I wake him up at eight 20. Okay, so. That's not science. That's, that's just one child that he also would like to sleep in, you know, so I mean, I guess like saying that, like. Some of our kids enjoy sleeping in, that, that's, most of them do, you know, so. I think relying on the argument, the AAP, the CDC arguments, like, I think we should stick with those if we're going to push for this. Rather than the anecdotal evidence of children liking to sleep in, you know, that's all I'm saying.
I would say it's not a matter of liking to sleep in. I would, of course, everybody likes to sleep in, right? But what we know about the teenage brain. Is that there is so much going on there.
Right.
That, that adhering to the biorhythms they need for sleep becomes a more critical issue than for younger persons.
But what we're saying here is that the World Health Organization says an adolescent starts at 10. A fourth grader is 10, you know, so they've got another year. So I mean, I guess what we're saying is. Again. We, I feel as though there's this priority for these high school students and. My kids are going to be high school students too, so I'm not here advocating for elementary and middle school students. I'm advocating for all the students. And I think that we need to look at it and, and just make sure. That there's not going to be an adverse effect on the elementary school students. And I'm not here to advocate for my students because my kids will be in high school before I know it. I mean, they've. It's, obviously everyone knows that it happens overnight. And so. If I, if I were to argue for anything for my kids, it would be for the high school because. I'm going to wake up tomorrow and they're going to be in high school, you know, and then, and maybe I'll be in your shoes and I'll say, yeah, well, you're, you know. Jennifer was right, like they do need more sleep.
Yeah, that's why, we, we can't see this as zero sum because our today's kindergartners are tomorrow, are going to be in high school next year, right? So we, we have to have a long view. And there's nothing we can do that's going to service everybody. It's just not. So in my humble opinion, this is the, this is the option of picking. The least of the quote evils, knowing that any change will be disruptive. And I think not making a change is, is the most harmful of all. Just based on what I've seen of these teenagers this year.
Sure, I mean, we do want to. One thing I, I am concerned about is. The, the way that it's been structured traditionally is this hierarchy where elementary, middle school, high school, right? And so. If a family. Has relied on that, you know, that structure where they have their older student, you know, kind of watch out for their younger student. And they're also in a financial situation where they're not going to put their child into latch key or something like that. And then they just. Cross their fingers and hope that their really young child can, can make it to the bus on, you know, to the bus or hang out at home until their older sibling gets home. That's concerning to me as well, you know, so. Um, or, or that child comes home and wants something to eat. Yeah, I mean, there's just a lot, a lot of factors, I guess, but. I'm also not opposed to, I'm not necessarily opposed to the, what was it, the orange plan? I mean, I, I mentioned that.
The orange plan pretty much preserves elementary as it has always been. So.
So.
There it is.
The only thing with the orange, well, orange and blue that we need to look into, I think Howard raised it.
Is from, uh, the BHEA question that came today. About working conditions, Pat. So we need to, we need to look into that. Um, I guess we're going to go back around if there's more questions.
So, so my question, Paul, is.
So my question, Paul, is should we cross out a few of these options to narrow our choices?
I don't, I don't even know if we're there yet. I think, you know, we have some, some people who like the blue. I know the recommendation from Todd was to get rid of the blue. Some people like the orange and yellow. Some people like the green. I don't know, well, maybe there's one or two in there. The ones that I'm hearing are the green, the orange, and the blue that are coming out. I mean, I forget what the other ones are. I don't, I don't know what other colors they are. Okay.
That's the current one.
Well, no, that's, that's just, that's 10 minutes. I think that hasn't been talked about. I mean, I think we could probably get rid of that one. What's the purple one? Or is that the purple one?
That's the purple.
That looks blue to me. Okay, so we can get rid of that. We, yeah, we can go through each of the options. The green probably stays, the green stays, the blue stays, and the orange stays. This one is, yeah, those three. We could probably eliminate one. And then there's obviously the current one, do nothing, which, you know, we can keep that. Okay. We can go around one more time, you know, with one last sets of questions. I know we have another agenda topic. And then I don't think we're making a decision tonight anyway, so we obviously it's had good discussion. We'll go to Lisa.
I think in terms of trying to predict things like who latchkey preferences of parents for morning versus afternoon latchkey, or babysitting of older siblings and younger siblings, it works both ways. Michelle brought up a great point. If the older siblings leave earlier, who puts the younger siblings on the bus? If there's, you know, if the parents have left for work. So there's childcare issues in all scenarios, and it, it can work for and against in both. I don't, I think we cannot rely, I think that's why we come back to something more objective, like the science and the CDC and American Academy of Pediatric Studies, because the rest of it's speculation. 10 people who don't like afternoon latchkey, there's probably 10 that don't like morning latchkey. It's very much subjective. I do have to say, I'm disappointed, I mean, we just got done hearing a presentation from Principal Hollerith saying if there was one universal thing he learned from the pandemic, it's that students really like the black hawk hour in the morning, where they start at 9:30. I cannot fathom that we believe there's a high school survey that would show preference to no change over a 9:30 start time in high school. I would really question the, the sample of students that were surveyed because they don't seem to be representative of any of the students I've seen and who come from different groups. Or it seems what Principal Hollerith would attest to when he, when he spoke to us earlier. So if we put aside the surveys, if we put aside all these anecdotal things that could, there's as many people who like one as the other, we have to come back to the science when we make these kind of decisions that are health and safety related. I don't see how we can't. And saying the CDC is a factor, one factor, weighed against other, that, so as much as I want to be able to compromise, you know, somebody said to me the other day, they used the term "science hypocrites." And that I won't forget because honestly, we are an educational institution. We teach science. We can't be science hypocrites. It's offensive almost. That's it.
Sarah, do you want to?
I think I just really wanted to clarify. It was in the report as well, and Mr. Watson referred to it, but it's really hard to listen to people compare this year's experience for high school students compared to last year or next year because it's a reduced schedule. Yes, they're starting at 9:30, but they're still getting out at 2:30. If they were to do those legitimate hours, they would be starting at 9:30 and getting out at 4:30. They need to consider, would they still love their 9:30 start if it meant that they had to go those full, almost seven hours till 4:30? And so keep that in mind. This year, it's been a tough year. As Mr. Hollerith has said, that black hawk hour was a consideration for the social, emotional wellness of those students. Moving forward, we have to go 1098 hours. We don't have that option anymore. So what's really, to be really careful in comparing a later start this year, which is a reduced schedule of only 65-minute classes versus 90, versus saying, yeah, a 9:30 start would be great, do you want to go till 4:30 in the afternoon? And that's really important to make sure that when we're, these are not apples and oranges here. There's, it's a reduced schedule versus a later start. So I just want to make sure.
Thank you, Sarah, for saying that, which goes back to my point. I don't, I don't think we should be listing the survey or the results thereof as a pro or con. It seems to be, so I don't find it reliable either way.
I appreciate that. What I'm saying is, when you say anecdotally, that it's making a huge difference. Well, it's making a huge difference because it's a reduced day. So we don't have the option of going to reduce day for high school. We have to go back to 1,998 hours of instruction. So if we start at 9:30, that means 4:30. And just to make sure that, that we're thinking of that when we talk about these high school kids. Yeah, they like the later start, but they're not experiencing what a later end is. And so, and neither are families. And so it's, you have to just be really careful with that. That's all I was asking.
And I also wanted, just so we don't lead people, lead people with the wrong impression, I do not think a 9:30 start equates to a 4:30 end. I think there are other things that can be done, and we've seen them.
You've seen them this year. We don't have to do 198.
Seen things like virtual hours that count toward the hours. We've seen other possibilities and outside-the-box thinking. Maybe it does, maybe it doesn't, I don't know. But that goes back to Paul and Howard saying, maybe this is premature. We're not ready really to start eliminating things at this juncture until we do have answers to those questions.
Okay, okay. That, I mean, what I'm saying is just, it's, we're trying our, it's, it, there are some state guidelines that we were relieved of this year, and to please keep that, and I think that, I'm trying to say this as a public community, not just to the board. It's really important to understand that there is, we have, we have obligations we have to meet next year.
I think, I think we get it, Sarah. It's a 9:35 start. Still getting on a 2:30, which it's just unique to this year.
Showing up in this list of things that we have already resolved and we're told that were not issues, like athletics. That's a non-issue for high school, so it's surprising to me to see it showing up as cons because we've resolved it and fixed it. So now we're taking a giant step backwards and saying, okay, now it might be a con. If it's there for Michelle and John and Siva and those in the community who want to see how we got here, that makes total sense to me. If it's back on the table as being a legitimate con, I have questions about that because that's very inconsistent with what we were already told. I thought we moved past it. We already got the study. We already got the athletic department director's opinion on this, and it was, we were told this is a non-issue. Now it's an issue again? I don't get it. Unless the reason it's an issue again is to show the process. And in that part, yeah, I applaud that because as a new board member, I would want to know how we got here. So I, I think that's a legitimate reason for including all these steps. I don't think it really belongs as a con anymore unless I think we have to make it clear, this is what we considered and we were able to resolve it. It is no longer an issue. Athletics will not be a barrier. We were told that by our athletic director. It's not a problem. Okay? That's being honest and transparent about it.
You're correct in that athletics wouldn't be a barrier. The con was listed because they would have to leave school earlier. So if it's a 4:00 PM start and it's a game day at an away game, they do have to leave school earlier. That's why it was listed. But it wouldn't preclude us from making that decision to move the start time.
Okay, Michelle?
So I, I guess we keep, I guess the thing right now, and looking at the list of districts that we have provided with start times that are similar to our current start, start time, and knowing their academic performance has not, you know, fostered one way or another, I think our students have definitely been performing well. And so there is a school district that actually has a 7:10 AM start time, and the other school districts that are definitely performing well academically have earlier start times than we currently have in Bloomfield. I understand that we want to get closer to the CDC and the ADA, APA guidelines. I support the green option, and the reason why I support the green option is because I looked at what would it do for parents, students, and staff? And so some of the costs, you may think 30 minutes or an extra hour financially for latchkey is a drop in the hat, but five days times whatever amount of money is an additional expense on a family. And so there are so many different cons that you can see here and go back and forth. And to me, the one that has the least amount of impact on the three populations, our students, our staff, and our families, to me was the green until we can come back and maybe look at it again when we've moved to our two middle schools with various different bus options. And so, and that's just my, my, my personal opinion.
Okay, Michelle, I don't, I know I'm out of order, but I, and I don't want to cut anyone off, but I do want to make it clear. I don't think an extra hour of latchkey is no big deal. I just didn't think, I think the, I don't think it's an extra hour. I think it's shifting the morning hour to the afternoon, or the afternoon to the morning. I wasn't implying that we would shave or add additional time to latchkey because yes, that would be a big deal for all the reasons you stated. In my mind, it was simply, does it matter if we're shifting it from the morning to the afternoon? It's still collectively the same amount. Into some parents, it's even better to break it up, is all I was saying. Or some parents, it's worse, and they would like it all in one chunk. That's the only point I was making with latchkey.
No, you're, you're not the only other person that mentioned latchkey. I was just saying that the latchkey time in general is on a few of the documents. And so when I'm making my suggestion, my suggestion is looking at, you know, how, how do we meet ourselves in the middle and make sure we're still meeting somewhat of a timeframe for our students, but have a consideration of all parties that are into play. And so that's why my suggestion would be not in favor of definitely the blue, but I would support the green.
Thanks, Michelle. Siva?
So are we still going to ask questions or are we picking an option?
No, I think we're just asking questions. I think Michelle in her, questions or statements, Sam?
All right. I've had all my questions clarified, so I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. Yeah, I don't think tonight we're picking any option. I mean, we could say anything in our statement. Howard?
All right. First, there was a comment made earlier that we've got analysis paralysis. This is the first time the board has ever seen this information, the first time we've ever talked about this in any depth. So we definitely are not in any sort of analysis paralysis because it's the first time we've had any input into it whatsoever. Second, we're not reinventing the wheel here. The AAP analysis or research has been around for years. Other districts in the country have done this. So all of the, not all, but the cons that we've got, how have other districts handled these cons? Let's find out so we can understand, because instead of just going from a gut feel of, well, I think this or I think that, let's find out data from other districts, how they have handled these issues. I, oh, and then finally, yes, we wanted to, we are, in theory, been looking at the beginning of the 2001, 2002 school year for this, but there's nothing magical about that.
2000.
We've been talking about this in theory for years, but we've never actually had this study, which again, I thank Sarah very much for doing it. Tremendous lot of work. But if we don't have the right data to really make an intelligent decision, then we kick it off until 2022, 2023, which quite frankly, with another analysis done by the Transportation Department, might even mean that it makes more sense to do it in '23, '24 when we reconfigure. So let's make our decision not only on the science from AAP, but on the science of data and what, instead of, we shouldn't be doing this on opinion, we should be doing this on facts.
Thanks, Howard. Jennifer?
I have nothing further.
I don't have anything further. Jonathan?
What was the name of the doctor, the sleep doctor?
Oh, the guy.
Lyle Victor.
Lyle Victor. I think I have his contact details because he was part of the, I could find it if you needed to.
I have their number. So, final little piece, I'm just looking at this. Between the green, yellow, and blue, blue satisfies, I'm sorry, yellow satisfied the original assumption going in, which is AAP. Blue, oh wait, sorry, green takes the, the revised AAP, which says that middle school and high school, so therefore it, it does high school late, or sorry, high school earlier, but it does satisfy the AAP for middle school. Blue does both. So going in, before we had this analysis, I would have gone with blue and yellow because both of them satisfy the high school. Green is a possibility if you sacrifice the high school, but you go with the middle school and AAP. You know, those three are all viable. They all have, have advantages based on AAP. What we have to find out is what other school districts in the country have done and how they have, how they have handled this Gordian knot.
Okay.
Paul, if I could jump back in and, for, around the room, talking about preferences, I'd like to say I align with Michelle. Green would be my first preference, and the gold would be my second preference. I have serious concerns about blue because of having elementary students out in the dark.
Got it.
That's my, that's my, that's how I'm leaning at this point.
We'll do Jonathan, then Michelle had her hand up, and then we'll go to, or maybe not, Michelle Harmel for our last agenda item at 10:30.
I second what Siva said. Green would be my preference, followed by the, I don't know what we're calling it. I was going to go golden red. Getting a.
Maze and blue.
So.
That's fine.
If we're telling, if we're saying what our preference is, that's.
I don't think, I don't think we were. I think it, in metaphor, you know, at 10:30 at night, I think we're just saying what's on our mind.
Well, I'll just restate that I really don't like green at all because if you, if you like green, you're saying that the one and a half years of middle school puberty should take precedence over the four years of puberty of high school. And that, that's just, doesn't add up for me. So I feel like if we have to compromise on less than 8:30 for one of these two groups, there's no question where that compromise should be. And then you're asking kids who are used to getting up later, I guess, never mind, that doesn't make much sense.
Michelle, I think you had your hand up. Michelle? Not Michelle Harmel, Michelle Southward. Did you want to say something?
No, I'm, I'm fine. I think that I've, I think I've expressed where I feel, and I think we've all shared our opinions tonight. So regardless to where our decisions are, it is based on your own personal, personal opinion, based on the science or not the science, it's still an opinion that we're all providing as to where our decisions are.
Yep, yep, yep. So we had a good discussion with that. I will, we will go to Michelle Harmel for mission vision.
I'm going to ask you a question.
I'm going to ask you if you really want to do this right now.
Exactly, Mr. Chairman.
I mean, it's really your.
No, I mean.
I want to make sure you have a good dialogue, and I could assign you homework that would help us get there.
You can, you can give us, if, if my colleagues agree, you can give us homework to do. We do have, we do.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Howard.
Point of order. First of all, we just finished 3D. Now we're going on to 3, 4A. Now we're going on to 3, 4A and 4B before we get to 4C.
Right, right.
So why don't we hand, we address 4A and 4B, and then we can have a discussion as to whether the time is right to have the conversation of 4C.
Well, at least we could do 4A. We have a board business, and then we could, we could discuss 4B and 4C. So 4A, do I have a motion?
Yes, I move the Board of Education to reconfirm Bloomfield Township's extended continuity of learning plan as mandated by the Senate Return to Learn Bill package and the additional requirements of Public Act III, which require reconfirmation at every board meeting as presented by the administration.
Do I have support?
Support.
Okay. Discussion, no, Jonathan?
I do think we need to add in the language that we are complying with the 20-hour per week.
Do we need to do that?
Yeah, we did it the last time. It's, I, I read it as part of the record, I can't remember at, at this time, but there is a requirement that once a month, we say, so as long as we do it next time, I guess, but that we say, and I'm not sure exactly how we worded it last time, but there's like a, the 20-hour requirement.
That is Public Act III, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Is it? Or is it the 40, 40, is that part of Public Act III, or is that 40, 40?
I mean, we, we technically have to do it once a month. As long as we do it within the month, we'll be fine, but...
I just don't want to forget to do it next time if we're not gonna do it right.
I don't think it precludes for the money. So we have a, we can do it next time. So a motion, second, call for a vote. Siva?
No comment. I'm good.
No, no, we're calling for a vote.
Yes.
Howard?
Yes.
Michelle?
Yes.
Lisa?
Yes.
I'm a yes.
Yes.
Yes, motion passes 7-0. Now, 4B, the MASP guideline. You could talk, I mean, I don't know how long this is, you know, if, if we want to go into that now, and talk about it, because we want to vote on it at the next meeting. So Howard, if you want to, well, Howard sent something, I don't know if we...
Well, yeah, so let me, this can be very, very short or, or long, depending upon if there are any questions. So you, you've all seen the MASP governance standards that were approved by MASP and the State Board of Education in 2017. Our district has thought about it and talked about it back in the day in seven, 2017 and 18, and decided that they didn't, whether the board at the time did not want to approve this. I think it's, at this point, very important, not only because we have a new board, but because there are numerous references in there to strategic plan, to vision, to a lot of things that we're going to be talking about as we get into finalizing the strategic plan with Dr. Harmel. So that's the reason why I've thought not only, because we had this in the board goals that we approved in, what, February? And we said that we were going to approve the governance standards by June. But because the governance standards are so intertwined with mission and vision, it just makes perfect sense that we at least consider them now before we start getting into designing a new vision statement and goals. So I sent you the supplemental information, which I don't know that you've had a chance to look at. Again, that was old material, it was material from 2017, which has FAQs, which has some of the, the rationale in terms of why this was done. And it also has a sample resolution that was prepared for boards to fill in the blank if they so choose. So with that as a preamble, I'll open it up for questions, and if there are no questions, then we can move to consider going to 4C. And if there are a lot of questions and a lot of discussion, then maybe we, we postpone that discussion until the next meeting.
Paul, I'll just look around. Jonathan?
I do have two questions. One, do we not have a govern, or we don't have governance standards at this time? And then two, what was the reason that it wasn't voted in last time?
So, and again, I'll ask for Paul to, to supplement my thoughts, because he was here and the rest of you guys were not. Number one, there are no governance standards that we, as a district, have. And quite frankly, before 2017, there were no state governance standards existing. So this was a new creation. Other states have done it, and if you read the, the information in the, the governance standards package, they, there was a whole task force that put this together, including three or four people on that task force that I know personally. They looked at a lot of other states, they did a nationwide survey, and, you know, stole different standards from other states, because Michigan never had them in the first place, but other states did. So this was a wonderful thing that MASP did for all school districts. It's not required for a district to incorporate it, but it is, you know, highly recommended. In terms of why it was not incorporated or, or approved back then, not invented here, In a lot of the prior school board's minds, it wasn't broke, why fix it on our side? We have a very, very high thought of our own district, and many people did not feel that this was going to be value-added for our district. I totally disagree with that. I think that as we are moving towards mirroring, mirroring how other school districts govern themselves, in terms of having a vision statement that really means something, in terms, in terms of having SMART goals, in terms of holding the superintendent accountable, in terms of holding ourselves accountable, in terms of having the community hold us accountable, these are all things that I think we should be mirroring what other school districts and the, that the, the benchmark, the exemplar school districts, the high achieving school districts do. And our prior school board didn't think that we needed to do that. Paul, did, do you have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I mean, I remember the meeting. I, I think that everyone, you know, the reason why in the past, I think everyone agreed with everything that was on there. I think there was, you know, not going through why, you know, I think previously, it just wasn't voted in as, as something, you know, that was needed at the time, you know, as standards that we needed to approve. No, no, no rhyme or reason around it. So, and, and, and now we're looking at it, and then it's up to us if we want to vote it in now, so.
I, I, I just thought of another one. Realize that these standards are two parts. There's the board standards, and there's the individual board member standards. And I do remember part of the conversation that, because in the individual board member standards, it does say very clearly that we should be doing professional development, just like our teachers, our, our principals, our administration, DSD, it says that we should do continuing education. And some of our school board members felt that they didn't need to do any training. They thought that they knew everything that they needed to know, and felt that this was...
Howard, I wouldn't, I wouldn't go, I wouldn't go, listen, the bottom...
This was, Paul, this was a part of the conversation that occurred.
But I think, I think we can just leave it at it's, you know, these are great...
I'm answering, I'm answering the question that was posed to me.
But no, I mean, point of, Howard, I, I think it was, again, I mean, these, this is a... Best practice that MASP came up with. It was a decision made by our prior board not to adopt it, and we don't need to go, you know, speculate or go into the reasons why.
That wasn't speculation.
Well, anyway, I, I think that answers your question, Jonathan.
I was fine a while ago.
That's, that's it. And any other questions or dialogue? Because I think the point of this was to have, have dialogue with, on the 29th at our next meeting, it'll be put on the agenda to vote on, so.
I think they're lovely.
Yep.
I think they're a profound step in the right direction, and I think it is very concordant with us setting goals and achieving them and being accountable.
Yeah, no, I don't, I don't disagree. I think a lot of the task force, a lot of due diligence was put into it. So we could decide as a board at the next meeting what we want to do. Any other questions? Okay, I don't see anything. With that, we will go now to 4C, or maybe a recommendation that we just take some homework back, and we, and we table this for another meeting.
Danny, that is gonna be my recommendation. Thank you. It's really hard, when we think about adults as learners too. This is far too long to put your brain into dicing words, which you all did a great job getting your homework done. Everybody submitted draft vision and mission statements. So what I'd like to do is, I'm gonna explain to you what I'd like you to do as homework, and then I'm gonna follow up with an email. So that way, if right now your brain is a little foggy, you don't have to take copious notes.
Can I make a request slash suggestion, since we have to put this off today?
I, I don't know what our agenda looks like for two weeks from now. I can't imagine it's not also packed. So I would propose that we do have a meeting next week sometime to do whatever, what we were gonna do tonight, so that we just keep plugging away. The, the strategic plan, metrics, and targets somewhat depend on getting the mission and vision done, and so it would, it would just be helpful to keep pushing it along.
We could, we could see, I know agenda is committee this week, we can see what's on the agenda on the 29th, just conscious of, you know, setting records with the amount of meetings that we're having.
I understand. But then, let's put, let's put Michelle first, if it is, it'll be the 29th, let's put her first.
Siva?
I, I may not be, be able to make myself available next Thursday, so I'll have to come back to you on that.
Yeah, no, we didn't, we didn't decide that. That was a suggestion. So we're, we're gonna see what's on the plate for the 29th, and, and if we do have Michelle, we won't have her last, we will bump her up to second to that, no, I'm just kidding. We'll bump her up earlier. With that, so I think we, we have some, you know, I think, I think we're okay with that. For that, I am gonna call for adjournment.
Wait, wait.
Wait, wait, wait.
Oh, homework, I forgot the homework assignment.
Paul, just one thing, I want to second what Jennifer said, that we try to expedite this, and if we can do a doodle to do a extra meeting, great. And the reason is, is the whole waterfall effect. We have the governance standards, which then helps advise us on mission and vision, which then helps us figure out the SMART goals for, you know, for the strategic plan that we've been working on for a while, which then is the input, if you looked at the graphic that was in the presentation earlier today, feeds into the MyKIP system. So all of these are sequential, so that we're on the critical path. So we just have to make sure that we keep a fire under us to get this done.
Good.
Okay. I know that Rebecca provided you a sheet in the Google, your Google Drive that you have access to, that lists all of the suggested vision and statements on one document, all of the suggested mission statements on the other document. We did have a person provide two examples, and I can't remember which one it was, but whichever sheet you find nine on, it's not wrong. Somebody provided two samples. So what I want you to do is go through them and rank order them. Number one, read them all and decide, if I were to pick today, my number one is, and put a number one by it, go through and number them all, and do the same for vision and mission. And then email your rankings to myself and Rebecca, and do that... Pardon?
No tiezies.
No tiezies. You must rank order them. This is forced ranking. And I would encourage you...
Color-coded, blue, yellow.
There are no blues and yellows. And also, what I would encourage you to do is read them all, don't immediately pick yours and put a number one by it. Read them all, and then choose your 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and in one case, 9.
No, that's good.
So is this just to get an idea?
This is just a starting point to the conversation.
All right.
Yeah, it's not a decision-making process.
And many of them, you know, so...
Question?
Yeah.
For us who may be a little over-functional, if we wanted to do what you asked, and then, like, pull and make a synthetic one out of elements, do you, would that be okay?
You could do that, but write it as a, a one outside of the ranking, because what I want to do is, when I collect them all, the activity tonight would be to show you what everybody's rank orders were, and to do that, to try and pull the top one out, or the one that most people were leaning to. And then if we couldn't get to decision through that ranking, then to start picking through the words that make you choose it. So yes, if reading them, you go, oh, epiphany moment, here's the perfect vision or mission, then draft it, but don't include it in the ranking.
Right.
And if you could get that to us next week, so that we have time to organize for the following week, if that's what happens, so just matching calendars, just, you know how to reach me. We'll figure it out.
Howard?
Michelle, let me just make sure I understand. So we're gonna do the rankings based upon what is there, and, you know, assuming that we don't do what Jennifer's saying, which is kind of an amalgam. But I'm assuming that the endpoint is not, is gonna be an amalgam. It's, we're gonna pick and choose words and structures, you know, a little bit of here and a little bit of there, and put it all together into something that really is, is optimal. We're not gonna end up with, we're not gonna end up with one of the, the eight or nine that were submitted, you know, exactly, correct?
Well, you might, if everybody felt it was ideal, but that's just a starting point in the process, Howard. So you're, it's just getting us a way to start lifting to the top the ones that you think speak the most to the vision and the mission. And then we start sorting through, well, why does that speak to you the most? What words in it? And then you'll get to a final one.
Okay.
So let me put it in an email. I'll put the directions in an email back, so that everybody knows what to do, by when, and that it's a part of a process, so the ranking does not automatically pick the final one.
And the ranking, Michelle, and I'm sure it'll be in the process, well, we're gonna do it on our own, send it to you. No one's gonna be in the Google Doc doing anything.
Correct. You don't do anything in the Google Doc, you send it to me. We just, that was a place for me to pull it up in the meeting, so everyone could see what was going on, but because we're not doing it that way right now, if you send me your rankings, and I'll put it all in an email, so tonight at 10:50, you don't have to remember all the directions. Go to sleep, you'll get it in the morning, and you'll go, oh yeah, I remember that.
So Michelle, what I think would be beneficial, not only doing the ranking, but just Gordon, going through and for ourselves, making notes on which words or which phrases really ring our bell, which are, which are the ones we like, and which ones don't we like, and that I think will facilitate, you know, the, the next steps going forward.
I think highlighting words, right? Like the verb you love, the noun you lo, like, I think that will end up being really helpful if we do that for all of them, yeah.
You guys steal my facilitation thunder.
That's okay.
That's called, Michelle, you're making yourself irrelevant.
We want, we want a cut of what you're getting.
I'm gonna, I'm, I'm gonna get it now. I'm gonna send an email, I'm gonna call for adjournment. Thank you, everybody.
Okay, good night.
Guys, before you sign off, I just want to say, we are ticking along so well on our internal board goals, like, it's not even funny. We, the one substantive item that we haven't quite addressed is the calendar, but I do think the calendar is happening. Maybe we could have an overt discussion about it at our next meeting.
Okay. And before we, sorry, before we adjourn, I also just have to, you know, shout out to Bloomfield Township for allowing this meeting to be conducted in this way. Many boards are not as lucky, and in the news, we're reading about horrific things happening, and I am so grateful for our township leaders for allowing it to be, to, to give us choice.
And more importantly, our technology somehow pulled us off.
Yeah. So never forget...
Technology!
...yeah, I take them for granted, I shouldn't...
I don't, I don't know where they are now. I think they left. They're not in the building anymore, but I'm assuming they're somewhere.
This meeting compared to how things worked, you know, three months, three or four months ago, this is tremendous. Props.
Thank you, Beth.
Thanks, everyone. Thanks, yeah, Dave, Vicky, and the team, and...
Great job!
Night, everyone.
Good night, everybody. Thank you.